Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the -- to order at six minutes past the sixth hour of the sixth day of the sixth month of the sixth century, sixth year of this century, to order. May we have a roll call for the city council?
Council members Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Wintaro. Yusefian.
And I promise not to do any devilish stuff. Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
I couldn't resist doing five sixes. It's once time in a century. Having said that, my salute tonight will be led by Councilman Yusefian, invocation by City Clerk Artie Casacchio.
Please stand and follow after me on a day of election. Let's remember that this is one of the countries that makes this election process work real well, and let's not forget and pay a pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray for our city and our nation and give thanks for the rights that we are able to freely exercise as American citizens. Of these, the most sacred right is the right for every citizen to vote, an action which is the ultimate guarantor of our nation's hallmark credo. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men and women are created equal. John Quincy Adams, the sixth President of the United States remarked, "Always vote for principle, though you may vote alone and you may cherish the sweetest reflections that your vote is never lost." Let us live up to these statements by casting our ballots this evening and ensuring the preservation of our democratic republic and our values as Americans. Amen.
Thank you. May we have your report?
The agenda for the June 6, 2006, meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, June 1, 2006, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What is next, please?
Presentations and appointments at 3A is Agenda Preview for the meeting of June 13, 2006.
Thank you. Mr. McFaul, nice to see you. How's the trial going?
It's going. I'm not allowed to talk about it. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. There are a few items to bring to the councils and communities' attention for a preview of next week's agendas, various agendas. As has been the pattern, we will be starting with the budget study session at 9:00 next Tuesday. On the redevelopment agency, there is no particular business agenda. There will be a 2:30 study session on regulations concerning banquet facilities and restaurants. There'll be another study session at a time certain, 6:00, to discuss the downtown specific plan and the mobility plan. On the Glendale City Council agenda commencing at 6:00, in particular, there'll be two action items, two related action items, that are the consideration of proposed ordinances that make adjustments to the various salaries and compensations for officers, subordinate employees, and various employees of the city. That's it for this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. And what is next, please? Mr. Yusefian, you're not next.
Mr. Mayor, on the issue of appointments, Mr. Najarian and I would like to reopen -- we would like to reopen the Design Review Board Number Two's filing period for another two weeks. So, and we are looking for an architect who has background in high-rise buildings and low-rise buildings, and we would be asking, as an interview process, for them to provide us with a portfolio. So as we looked at this, there were some contractors, and there's some laypeople, but at this point, that board needs somebody who has that type of expertise. Thank you, Mr. -- Board Number Two.
Is unreal.
We would like to open that for another two weeks.
You -- what is next, please?
Next is Presentations and Appointments. I would just like to point out, though, to the audience that when Mayor Weaver asked Mr. McFaul how his trial was going, it's because Mr. McFaul is fulfilling his civic responsibilities of serving jury duty, not because he's involved in a trial. No problem.
Well, I tried to slip it by, but --
Three.
You're sharp, Artie.
Sometimes I am. Presentations and Appointments at 3B is proclamation designating June 11 through the 17, 2006, as Flag Week.
Thank you. And Vito, would you like to come up? Vito Canelo, I'll read the proclamation you're going to accept. Whereas Flag Week, June 11 through the 17, 2006, was established by an act of Congress in 1966 as a 21-day period during which our flag should be especially honored and displayed, and whereas but our flag display, we reaffirm our allegiance to the principles for which it stands, honor those men and women who have served under it in protecting our nation from those who have attempted to destroy our freedom. And whereas the flag continues to stand as a symbol of hope and opportunity to those of foreign birth who have become citizens of our country, now therefore, I, Dave Weaver, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim the week of June 11th to the 17th, 2006, as Flag Week and urge all residents to honor America by displaying our flag during this time. Mr. Derek.
Mr. Mayor, I'm honored to present your proclamation to Mr. Vito. Vito, you -- we've said it many times before, and every year you come up, but you truly embody what it means to be a good, excellent citizen. I hope all the kids out there are watching and will take a little bit of your efforts along with them in their lives. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. If I may, I want to say a few words, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, and everybody here in the Assembly, the Congress of the United States, by joint resolution on June 9, 1966, approved HJ Resolution 763, proclaiming the week in which June 14 occurred as a National Flag Week. And the same resolution requested that the President is to issue every year a proclamation and also call upon citizens of the United States to display the flag during that week. The origin of Flag Week is very special to me, because I am one of a few people alive that was involved originally with Bill Bailey on Montrose, like Crescendo Canyara Rotary Club, Dan Carpenter, the editor of the ledger newspaper, and Congressman H. Allen Smith, on the successful accomplishment of Flag Week. Actually, I was one of the two that originated the legislation. Every year since 1967, I have sent a letter to each one of the Presidents as a reminder of Flag Week, and sometimes the White House sends a copy of the proclamation to me. No publicity is given. This causes me anger and shame, because forty years after the original proclamation, the majority of the people who might speak remain in ignorance on Flag Week. My hope for this year was that President Bush was to give us some publicity to Flag Week, and maybe in the near future, we will include in our national calendar this event as a reminder to everyone to display their flag the week of June 14. This is my hope, and a reminder to everyone in our community, to put the flag out next week, regardless of what is done, is to be done nationwide, and help to demonstrate that there are still enough good Americans and that patriotism is still alive in our community. Finally, many thanks to the Glendale City Council for issuing this proclamation, and with your permission, I would like to give you the proclamation to the Crescendo Valley Historical Society. I have quite a few of those, I don't need anymore, in order to preserve a piece of history of North Glendale.
Thank you very much, Vito.
I wish that your society will preserve that for posterity.
It's an honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next is City Council and/or staff comments.
Well, I -- first, let me relay my disappointment that an important issue, such as the issue on 8B, with the Montrose Shopping Park issue, was put on today, and we have a lot of people who are coming. I wasn't going to be here, but because it is an important issue, I decided to come. Today is Election Day. I hope all of you voted, and in the future, important issues like this should not be agendized on Election Day. I would like to say that I will be leaving around 7:30, just so the mayor knows, and hopefully, we can take that issue up earlier rather than later, so we can -- if we need to act on it, we can act on it.
That was one of my comments. After staff comments, the next thing will be Item 8B. Could we do consent? No. Cards are being -- items are being pulled. From consent? Yes. So we'll go straight to 8B after this, so hopefully, we can hear everybody that wants to speak, and Mr. Manukian can leave. Any other comments before I get -- Mr. Najarian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we're rushed for time, but I just wanted to relate that this weekend, on Sunday, I was fortunate enough to attend the Verdugo Adobe's Open House in honor of our 100th anniversary. And we certainly had magnificent events at the Glendale Civic, our gala dinner, and our less formal celebration, but sometimes in life, the more simpler things are best. And that certainly was the case at the Verdugo Adobe, where just with a few appetizers and the doors to the Adobe --
Adobe.
The Verdugo Adobe held --
The acrobat?
I know. Held open with some dancers and some displays. That really hit home about how our small, what was once a small, almost uninhabited region, has grown to where we are today. And I'd like to thank everyone who was involved with that. I know Margaret Hammond was there, causing some mischief, as usual, and Doris Tweet, and everyone, Gary Ackerman, and everyone from the Fiesta Days of the Verdugo Committee that were there. So it certainly was an enjoyable and enlightening event. Thank you.
For me, I'll have Dave's Corner at Porto's Bakery tomorrow morning at 9:00. Got people down there again last week. I appreciate your coming down. It's good to interchange with you one-on-one. It's pretty formal here. You don't get much of an opportunity to do it, so I do encourage anybody to come in. Found out they're not furnishing, you've got to buy your own coffee. I do, too, so.
Be careful, anything you say might be held against you.
That's true. I won't say anymore, except that tomorrow night, so you know, there will be another study session of the City Council for four hours, starting at --
Four to eight.
Four to eight. So it's your opportunity, if you want to come down to sit and listen to some boring -- some boring discussion of a $640 million budget, it's your opportunity to sit and listen. Now --
I think it's exciting. What do you mean boring? I don't have a life.
Let's not go there.
Mr. Mayor, if I could --
Yes.
I know you're in a hurry, but I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to do something that gives me great honor and pleasure, and ask to publicly introduce to the City of Glendale our new city engineer, Mr. Rubik Bolani, who is over here, hiding in the corner, but I just wanted to have the opportunity for the entire city to meet him and to tell everyone again what a pleasure it is for me to announce this and how much I look forward to having him on the Public Works Management Team. He has performed -- you're not going to get out of this, Rubik. He has performed excellently in his time with the city to date, and I expect nothing but the best from him in the future. And again, I'm very happy to have him in this department.
Say something, fellow engineer. That's it for my engineering for today.
I'll be very brief, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. It's truly a great honor and privilege to be appointed new city engineer of the City of Glendale, and I just wanted to express my deepest gratitude to Mr. Zern, Mr. Starburg, and Mr. McFaul for their vote of confidence and for appointing me and giving me this opportunity. It's been a great pleasure working for the city in the last almost six years. I've been through many challenges, but it's been truly an enjoyable experience, and I look forward to serving the city, the community, along with our excellent management team in my new capacity, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you, and you're going to have a lot more challenges coming up.
I look forward to it.
Mr. Mayor, it's probably appropriate to point out that Rubik wasn't handed this position easily. He had to compete for it. We had an outside recruitment, which candidates across California were invited to apply, and a number of quality candidates did apply. We had several assessment panels, including a panel of public works directors and engineers from cities comparable to Glendale and Southern California, did assessments, along with a community panel, and an in-house panel of other executives in the city, and Rubik came out on the top of the list, and on that basis, it was a particular pleasure, I know of Steve, to recommend him for appointment. He did a fine job.
That's what I was going to mention as well, that he competed for the job and he came on top, so congratulations.
Yusefian.
And, Mr. Mayor, I think Rubik had an advantage over the rest of them, and the reason he had advantage, because he was groomed by our previous city engineer, Lou LeBlanc, for several years, a very capable person, and he always spoke very highly of Rubik. So I know you had to carry the water for a while, but at the end of the day, it has its rewards.
Yes, thank you.
And so we look forward to having you work for the citizens of Glendale, and hurry up, finish Brand Boulevard, so we can start the next one.
You've got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
City Council comments. We are now going straight to 8B, and if anybody else has cards, please turn them in. And one individual said, "Put them in the owner's pile." I have no such thing, so -- but I'm trying to gauge how much time to give everybody, because I'm trying to get this gentleman out by 7:30. Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fif -- about fifteen cards so far. So at three minutes, that'd be 45 minutes, it'll be close to seven, 10, 20 minutes. It's getting close.
That's okay.
We'll do the three minutes, and if you can slice it down, fine, but need speaker after we -- oh, we forgot about the report. How long is the report going to take?
It'll be short.
Thank you.
In fact, I'm going to start, and I'll speak as quickly as I can.
Mr. Starburg and Ms. Wilkerson.
Thank you.
To somebody.
Tonight, we're giving you a staff report on, in fact, the request of the mayor, April 11, and a follow-up request by Councilmember Manukian on May 9. We were asked to address tenant turnover, changes in ownership, the proposed historic district, and we've reported, and many people have copies of the report, on the recent activity in the area, tools that are available, and we included Spar Heights. Now, we have had many community concerns. As you can see, this pile of cards in front of me, over 600, I've given you the text of both sides of the card. We've also got a number of emails that came in today, and a letter that was attached to an email. I'm putting them all in the record, and of course, there are some attached to your report. The community concerns, as we've understood them, are that the rising rents will encourage new development, redevelopment, that the increasing property taxes are going to put pressure on the area because of these new sales, the taxes go up, and that people are concerned that Montrose, a place that they perceive as just perfect as it is, will become Old Pasadena, something they don't see as giving the customer service that they have come to enjoy, and it'll encourage higher intensity uses that will have traffic and parking impacts. And some people have expressed concern specifically that the newest property owners are not connected to the community, don't understand the background. The property owners, I met with them on May 31st, expressed some concern that there had been no contact with them. They invited me to attend because they'd heard about this meeting coming up, and they expressed interest in talking about historic districting, but said they really didn't have the information to make any assessment at this point, and that they are quite concerned that their property values will be affected by any additional regulations. You'll see that in the report, and on here, there's a map that shows the changes that have been occurring in the area, the black areas, which have addresses. There are seven ownerships that have changed in the last five years, from 2000 until now, and those are all in the black. The beige, sort of lighter shading, is from the changes that occurred in ownership from 1990 to 1999, and the white areas preceded that. If I can mention that the most recent change was at the corner of Honolulu and Oceanview, where the bookstore exists, and that one just went through, I think, a couple weeks ago, or a few weeks ago. When we looked at Spar Heights, we saw a similar pattern, perhaps not as large in groups of lots, and the same code, so you can see the pattern. Now, I think Kristen's going to just quickly go over the zoning as it exists today.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Could you go back for the slide, the one before that? Okay, as you got those cards, you gave us a copy of those cards. It says, "These are buildings that are purchased in the last year," and the address is 2258 Honolulu, and I don't see that, 2258. Is that the one on the corner there? It shows as white.
People refer to the blocks in different ways, because, as you can see on this block, there's actually several addresses. We referred to it as 2260, but it's also known as 2258. That's true of some of the others. You just have to look at the numbers to see what's closest, because when you have several postal addresses, we could have shown the range, but --
And where is 2295?
It's on the northeast corner.
That's Faye's Woman Apparel.
Right in the corner.
Right. It says that it was also purchased last year, but it's not shown.
It was not, to our knowledge, purchased. I think that was one of the properties, that there was an approach by someone to purchase it, but it was not purchased.
So it has not turned over. So this list is inaccurate, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Our records came from the LA County Tax Assessor.
Okay, so recent LA County -- okay, because I'm trying to make this read, read this one, so, okay. Got it?
Yeah.
Got it? Okay, just wanted to know.
Kristen Asp.
Okay, really quickly, to kind of go over the recent permits. Staff researched basically the last five years of zoning use certificates, UPS, variances, design review board applications, and upon evaluating that, really found that the applications appear to be fairly stable from year to year. There was no single tenant space that appeared to have consistent turnover, and to date, there doesn't appear to be a surge in the number of development applications, like CUPs, variances, and design review board applications this year to date. The zoning designations for the two areas, the Montrose Shopping Park is Zone CR, commercial retail.
You know, I do have to go, but let's not rush through this presentation.
Okay.
Let's go back to 31 applications between 2001 to present. How many of them were in the past year, or year and a half, two years, six months?
Um, I'm not sure.
There's a breakdown on the staff report.
The breakdown of the exact years for 2005 --
I think it's in page five.
I think page five outlines most of the, all the zoning use certificates.
Those are zoning use certificates.
But the development applications are just broken down.
Breaks out the types of applications. In fact, most of them, 14 probably, or close to 14, were conditional use permits for serving alcohol.
Where are you looking?
Top of page six of your report.
Yeah. Can it be use permits?
I would estimate about seven applications, 2005, 2006.
What about ERBs, changes in building, or tearing anything down, or building something over, anything of that sort, or any requests for?
Most of them signage.
There's nothing active in the area right now. There was an application related to a facade change in the last year.
One in 2005.
But there's not anything really active right now. We haven't had any.
Building, facade changes, I understand, CUPs for alcohol.
No new buildings.
Or no building.
Building in the five years I've been here.
And, but you do have to go to design review if you're putting a sign, new sign.
Yeah.
Do you have a part of the sign program and all this stuff?
And I believe that some of these were related to signs, but really, the number is very low.
Yeah, I know.
In the context of knowing that most of them are alcohol-related, which are mostly for the new restaurants or changing ownership.
Okay.
Okay, on to the zoning designation. Montrose Shopping Park, as I said earlier, is Zone CR, commercial retail, permits a variety of land uses, focusing mainly on retail and service uses. CUPs are required for uses such as churches, schools, and banquet halls, but kind of the difference in the CR zone is that there's additional restrictions protecting the pedestrian environment, which limits certain uses, certain types of office uses and whatnot, on to the second floor, sort of preserving that first-floor pedestrian environment. The Spar Heights area is Zone C3, a commercial service zone, and permits a large, a wide variety of retail and service uses. Quickly, with the development standards, basically relating to height, the CR zone has a height limit of 45 feet or three stories, and the C3 zone, Height District 1, which is the Spar Heights area, limits the height to 50 feet or three stories. This table here just basically outlines that in table form, CR and C3 zones.
So the CR is, is the shopping park?
Is more restricted with 45 feet, correct.
Shopping park.
And the C3 zone is the Spar Heights area.
Okay.
And I think it's in -- are you going to deal with the residential section?
Correct.
What happens with the residential?
Correct.
Okay, so you're going to give us that?
Correct. So in this slide, if you were to do a mixed-use project that included, you know, a residential component to it, in the CR and C3 zones, the R1250, which is the multifamily residential zoning standards, would be the most, would apply, and since that's the most restrictive, those height limits would supersede the 45 and the 50 feet. And basically, how that gets determined is on the width of lot. Lots 90 feet or less are limited to 26 feet in height or two stories. Essentially, it would be a, you know, two-story building, first-floor commercial, and one story of residential above that commercial. Lots greater than 90 feet in width, 36 feet or three stories, first-floor commercial, the second and third story above being residential.
This is residential in CR and C3 zones?
A residential mixed-use project.
Okay.
So that basically covers the height limits.
The residential is the same in both zones, because like all our other commercial zones in the city, it's based on the R1250 provisions, and so this applies to every commercial.
So for residential, the height limit is less than what it is for a non-commercial, non-residential?
Correct. That's correct. And that's often true in the other zones of the city as well.
So basically, if you have a building that the first floor is commercial, and the second and the third floor could be an office in the CR zone, but if you decide to have, let's say, the second floor to be residential, you cannot have a third floor.
If it's less than 90 feet wide.
Less than 90 feet wide.
Right, and if it's more than 90 feet, then you can go to 36.
And that's kind of an inconsistency we have in our commercial zones. We corrected it in some areas, like East Broadway, but here, and when we did East Broadway, if you remember, I said C3 is kind of a strange zone. This, just one more example.
But right behind these, you have 1250 zones, and you also have some R1 zones. In the R1 zone, you can go up to 28 feet.
Yes.
Okay? And on the 1250 zone, which is strictly residential, you will end up being the same thing.
Correct.
So in either case, actually, having a house behind you, if you try to do a mixed-use, the house behind you, a two-story house behind you, will be taller than a mixed-use. And this is something that was talked about when Carl Roggio was here a long time ago, and he had a vision of maybe having some housing about that parking structure that they built over there, and that never happened because his zone was there, and the Montrose people did not want the zone to be changed, so it never changed, and it stayed the way it is.
Could we go on with the presentation? We'll come back later.
Thank you. And next, Tim Foy, the principal planner responsible for zoning code review, with Kristen, is going to talk about some of the options, because -- is going to talk about some of the options, because council members asked us to provide some options if there was a feeling some changes needed to be done. So he'll go through them with you.
Before Tim Foy goes...
Mr. Yasefia.
Mr. Mayor, do we have a list? I know you have listed all the variances, and the ZOCs, and so on and so forth. Do we have a list of the different businesses in here? Could we get a list of that? Let's say, how many medical offices, how many retail, how many service, how many deli restaurants, how many gyms, liquor stores, market?
We could take that information off of the zoning use certificates. We'd have to go through individually and account for that. If you'd like us to do that as a follow-up, we can do that.
To all of us, somewhere down the line. Not for today.
Assuming we're going to do more on this over the long term, that'll be something we can do.
It's a low priority.
Thank you.
Yeah, somewhere down the line.
So, Tim.
First thing I want to talk about is historic districting. As you know, that there isn't, we're told there's an effort underway, that people have engaged Historic Resources Group to conduct a survey of the area for possible listing at the state level. Anyone can initiate a survey. The State Historic Resources Commission can hold a hearing and find that a district is eligible for the state register without owner's consent. And that kicks in a lot of the same secret protections. And that is exactly what happened with the Glenn Fed Building about five years ago, where there was a hearing by the commission, and it was just found to be eligible for the state register, even though the owner didn't consent to have it actually listed.
Mr. Yasefia.
They can, yes. It's not like in Glendale, our procedure where owners have to affirmatively sign a petition saying they want it. It's the opposite. They have to file a petition saying they don't want it. Their silence is assumed to be consent.
If it'd be okay, I'd like to go through your PowerPoint, how we can address all these things.
Sure. Yeah. And then what happens, I mean, the main effect of having, being either on the state register or found eligible as a district, is that we would apply the Secretary of Interior Standards through a secret review process for any new building or any design review of a facade change. Being listed on the national register is fairly similar to the state and its implications. And the biggest difference is if you want it to become a local district, where, again, the owner consent operates differently. You need an affirmative action by the owners to be listed. And design guidelines tend to be more specific. You recently reviewed design guidelines for residential properties, and of course, they were quite detailed and extensive, and we would probably look for the same thing for any application for a commercial district. Whereas the Secretary of Interior Standards, although they're very useful, and they're quite commonly used by cities, are much more general in their language. And another thing we could do is zoning review. And the concerns we've heard from the community, these could focus on building height, maybe a maximum size of retail restaurants, or a maximum street frontage for retail restaurant operations. There are some cities that have investigated anti-chain regulations that focus on things like, does your merchandise, is your merchandise repeated in other stores, the exact thing. And there's also the issue of, if we decrease housing opportunities, the State Department of Housing and Community Development might want to weigh in. You know, we recently had trouble with that through a general plan amendment. A specific plan is actually pretty similar to zoning review, although it's more comprehensive. And by state law requires that you take a comprehensive look at infrastructure and open space. And it can include more tailored design guidelines, but basically, it's just another form of zoning review. And moratoriums, you have to make a finding that are necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. And if they impact the development of multifamily housing, and since mixed-use is permitted use here, this would occur here, there are stricter findings that have to be made. They're much more difficult to make. And these are some options that the council could choose tonight. Staff is not recommending any particular action, just that you listen to the public concerns and then direct staff. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, the motion that we drew up is detailing this outline, and it's sort of like a menu. We want your direction, and we thought we'd give you some choices, but of course, you have any other options that you choose as well. But we thought this would give you a start by giving you a bit of a menu. And you can do one or two, or just one, or whatever.
Corrections, if any.
If any. And thank you. That's our presentation.
It's okay. I'd like to start with the cards, get the public input, and we can go back and ask a bunch of questions. Okay, I'm up to about 18, 20 cards now. We'll go with the three minutes. And if you don't need the three minutes, appreciate it, but I'm sure there's a lot of strong feelings in here. So let us have it. George Jaffray Jr., followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver and Council. Your choice for action this evening ought to be a no-brainer. You should approve option three to actually initiate, at a minimum, with possibly adopting other options as well. A zoning change for the Montrose Spar Business Area, the other options do not effectively stop continuing dangerous developments. I want to emphasize how wrong-headed certain pleas may be. By making a zoning change, certain people may argue that it's unfair to them, to limit them who put their money into the property with plans based upon existing zoning, which would, they would not be able to carry out with a change in zoning. They say it would be unfair. But rather, it is unfair for people who make plans without considering the deleterious effect of their plans on the community where they put their money. When people don't consider the effect of their plans on the community, they should be rather punished, not accommodated. So I ask you to choose, at a minimum, option three. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond, followed by Andy Miza.
My name is Margaret Hammond. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. I'm addressing this, I do not live in the area, but have visited for many years. And, you know, they say sometimes success spoils a good thing. And I'm hoping that isn't what's going to happen here. Because it has become so successful that people want to get in on the ground floor and start spoiling what made it a success in the first place. Just as we have seen what has happened here in Glendale on Bryan Boulevard. I can remember when it was a wonderful area to walk up and down, and shop on, big deal, was to be open Friday night till nine o'clock. I remember when that happened, there was a big to-do about it. When the dance hall was, a dance hall was allowed to come, and when you could buy liquor. Before that, there were not places available to buy any alcohol outside of just certain places. So I'm hoping that you will initiate number three, initiate a zoning change for the CR zone focusing on what is listed here. The people, that's what the people in the majority want for that area. And since you represent the people of that area, I'm hoping that you will take into account their wishes, and what would be best for their quality of life in their area. I don't live there, and you don't live there, but it's their wishes, and that's the way they would like it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Andy, followed by Robert Snyder.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver and Council. My name is Andy Miza, and I'm happy to be here this evening. There's a flyer that's been circulating around town that's caused a lot of fury. And I don't know if everybody has seen copies of this. No, it's a different one. I have a few copies, if you could get those up to everybody. What it basically says is, it says, "Preserve Old Town Montrose." And it says, "Montrose is in danger, uses the world's outside developers, and plans to tear down the existing structures to build new, larger mall structures." It talks about preserving runaway development. It's pure lies. And this is what's circulating and getting everybody all up in arms tonight, and that's why we're even here. It goes on to say, on page two, which was a flyer that was handed out at a meeting several weeks ago, "In danger of rampant development, it's hard for current businesses to survive as the rents rise, and some of these developers have a stated intent to tear down portions of the shopping park, we're in danger of losing our beautiful, quiet Main Street." If I didn't know the facts, I'd be shocked and scared too, and I'd be supporting some of the things that you're discussing this evening. Unfortunately, I do, or fortunately, I do know the facts. And it's not as it's stated here. I've got 130 total signatures here of people who either work and live up in the area, as well as own properties, that I'd like to give to you folks this evening, who are in support of slowing down this entire process. It's moving far too fast. Nobody has taken the opportunity to even get the property owners involved in any discussions. We haven't been invited to meetings. We haven't consulted with you folks in the city. We did have the opportunity to meet with Elaine when we invited her to a meeting that was just kind of an emergency, trying to call everybody together a couple of weeks ago, a week ago, actually. So what I'd like to say, just in closing, is my family owns four buildings up in the area. We've always kept our buildings neat, they're well-maintained. We have absolutely no plans for over-development or even further development. And we take this all very, very seriously, because these actually are our retirement nest eggs, these buildings. That's where we're investing our money for retirement. Please slow down. Don't vote and rush to any big decisions this evening. I think you'll be pleasantly surprised by some of the things that you're going to hear from some of the new and existing owners in town. And thank you very much for your time.
Which buildings do you own?
Mr. Menoukian.
Which buildings do you own?
We own 2335, 2343, 2349, and 2355 Honolulu, the Montrose Travel Buildings.
North side.
On the north side of the building, uh-huh, in the middle block.
Mr. Yasefia.
I think you answered one of my questions. The second question is, how long do you have owned those properties?
We've owned, my folks have owned their building since 1973, I believe.
Okay, and do you have any plans in tearing them down and build a mall there?
Absolutely not.
Have you been approached by a developer to sell the property so they can improve it, or...
We've heard from realtors who were interested in purchasing the buildings, and we said, "No, we're not interested in selling. We like..."
Did the realtors say what they were looking for, or what their...
Just that they had people that were interested in investing in town.
That's all.
Nothing beyond that, no. And I actually was approached by two separate realtors. And I think they called a lot of the people up in town. I don't think that's a secret.
Question, over the years, have you been approached in the same way? Over the last 10, 20 years?
You know, we get letters, I get a handful of letters every year.
I get them for my house, too.
Yeah. You know, I don't think it's anything out of the norm.
Standard realtor farming.
Yeah.
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 Thank you.
Would you like these signatures?
Yes.
Yeah, turn them to the city clerk, they'll make a part of the record. Robert Snyder, followed by Jim Beckenhauer.
Mayor, councilman? Gosh, you all look 10 years younger than in person than on TV.
Thank you. These lights are not very...
My name's Bob Snyder.
I just want to know what you need, because I'm going to vote for it right now.
I was hoping you'd say that. My name is Bob Snyder, and my wife, who probably won't stand up, but honey, would you just stand up? There you go. My wife and I bought a building at 2301 Honolulu Avenue about nine months ago.
So you're the one who started it.
Exactly. It's five stores, and we are definitely the, one of the big bad outside developers.
Southeast, southwest corner.
Northwest corner of Honolulu and Ocean View.
Northwest?
Northwest corner.
Okay.
There's a podiatrist on the corner.
A podiatrist, yeah.
The flower shop and all this stuff?
No.
No?
A podiatrist, Mountain Rose Gifts, and then a hairstylist.
Yeah.
Honolulu, and then a soccer store, and a dog grooming place on Ocean View.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're big bad developers from the outside. However, we live in Glendale.
How long?
And we've been in Glendale for five years. We used to live in La Crescenta. Three kids have been to all the local schools, where we've been very involved. And in fact, my youngest just graduated from Crescenta Valley. We're not developers. We have no plans to tear anything down, or build any condominiums above our buildings. In fact, we're now in the process of doing an exterior remodel of the building, working with a local architect, and trying to retain the ambience of Montrose, and incorporate as much historical detail as we cost-effectively can. And we've even run the plans by the Historical Society. We're trying to work with them. However, this remodel is very costly, and we don't want to spend the money, only be told by a historic district what we can do down to the last doorknob. This is why we're opposed to historical districting, even though it puts substantial dollars in our pockets. And I'm perplexed why there's such an issue about chain stores. There's chain stores in my building. The soccer store has three stores. I understand Mountain Rose Gifts is two stores. The restaurant across the street is opening more stores. So I'm not sure why chain stores is such a bad thing. We already have them. And we have the coffee bean, which is great up there. We love Montrose. We don't want to see it lose its charm and character. We're stunned, actually, really stunned, that this has made into such an adversarial issue. In fact, it's really not an issue at all. It's not, as you'll see, none of the new owners want to change the area. You know, we don't want to be the Hatfields and McCoys. And we want to work with the merchants, the local residents, who are all our friends and neighbors, to make sure Montrose remains a vital and fun place to eat and shop. And actually, this is a building we hope we can pass on to our kids.
Hey, thank you. Artie, the bell's not going off.
It is, and about, well, the bell already...
Already rang.
Yeah.
I have, there's, I have two owners that can't show up. Can I read their letter?
No, but you can submit them to the record.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations to your son.
Thank you very much.
Now you've got college.
What's that?
Now you've got college.
Do those letters say pretty much the same?
Cornell, you're going to pay.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yasefia.
Sir, do those two letters say pretty much the same thing you said?
They say almost exactly the same thing. And thereby...
We can't hear you there. Come over to the, no, 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 over to the mic.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Hysterity.
Those letters are not by new owners. One is a person that's owned the building, where Gudas and Vines, they've had it two years, and they've made no changes. They don't plan to make any changes.
And the other one?
And the other one is by the people that own the old J.C. Penney building, I'm told, which has the new Zen Thai Restaurant going in.
A multi-level one?
Kind of, yeah, that's a mezzanine.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then there's a day spa going in. And so they're obviously not changing anything. And no one's changing anything. This is just a made-up issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jim Beckenhauer, followed by Robert Thomas.
Hi. Good evening. Let me introduce myself. First of all, that's a new owner, and I'm an old owner, so I've been around. I'm an owner who does have a connection. My name is Jim Beckenhauer. I am an owner, obviously. I've been a teacher at Crescenta Valley for 31 years. I've been a part of Montrose for, since 1950. My brother, myself, and my mom, we lived above our commercial building, and Montrose was our home. It was my front yard. We did all our shopping in Montrose. I can remember going for grocery, grocery shopping down at Shopping Bag, bought a lot of stuff at J.C. Penney. So those are chain stores, and they were, they were healthy in Montrose at that time. And I think it was, it was good. Montrose really does mean a lot to me, but I'm very much in... Montrose really does mean a lot to me, but I'm very much in favor of keeping Montrose quaint. I like Montrose, and that's the way I want it to be. But I am really concerned about some things that just doesn't feel right. First of all, as an owner, and people who have probably the most at stake, being bypassed concerns me and the concerns of the community itself, that they should, we should work together, and we should be able to have those concerns brought to the owners, rather than thinking that we're the enemy. Second, frightening people about the intentions of new ownership, as to what they plan on doing, and the fact of trying to insinuate they're going to ruin Montrose, just really is wrong. And I've talked to a number of the owners, and it's wrong. All I've seen is the efforts of the new owners to refurbish and improve the properties they own. They are not trying to change Montrose or ruin it. They're trying to make it better. For the first time in a long time, we've got complete occupancy in Montrose, which I think is really important, and I think that says a lot for them. And I really, I really think we should be welcoming the ownership, rather than trying to scare them away. I think that's a bad precedent to set. Raising rent, I know it's a fear, but it's a natural thing for rents, a house, what it costs to buy a house, everything is going up, and sometimes you have to, to cover the cost. And lastly, it bothers me that people want to regulate who rents our properties and who's in those properties. I think that's wrong. I think competition's what keeps a, a community alive. I think competition is what keeps it healthy. I myself rent to, or we, my, my wife and I, we rent to a chain, and I think they do a lot for Montrose, and that's Merle Norman. And I think that they're, they're great. So the bottom line, I think it's really important here, is that, that we want to work together with the people of the community and, and the store owners. We don't want to point fingers at each other. We want to work with them, and we want to work to make Montrose the best it can be and keep it the best it can, so that's the way I feel. I've been there a long time. Thank you.
Mr. Yusef.
Sir, sir, where, which property you own?
2339.
2339, and where is that?
It's on the north side. It's across from the bowling alley.
Okay, you're right, across from Bowling Alley. And is there still a residential above there?
No. That was our home, but it's now offices.
So it's offices, so you no longer live there?
I no longer live there. I lived there for a long time, but...
It's, it's interesting, because, and when was that building built?
Geez, I think it was in the 20s, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not sure 20s or 30s.
So even in the 20s, Glendale had mixed use?
It did.
Good.
And it was, and it was my front yard, and I knew everybody at Montrose, and they knew me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good piece of history.
Robert Thomas, followed by Mary Leroux.
Wow.
Hi, I'm Robert Thomas, and I'm speaking for my father, Phil Thomas. My father owns a property at 2230 Honolulu, which is on the south side of the street, across from Danca, no, no, Black Cow, where the old theater used to be.
Your market.
Yeah. One of my tenants, Joseph Cuisine, you guys are, Elaine helped him to get his restaurant in there, and it was very nice. Thank you very much for that. The, my father owned, has owned the property since 1999, 1998, somewhere around there. And as realtors, we recognize the community and, as something special. And that's why my dad wanted to buy it. And he bought it simply for retirement purposes, he's 84. And the reason why I can't be here tonight is that he broke his pelvis at Easter, and he's in a lot of pain. But I can do a good job for him. He, he has multi-year ten, leases on the property, there's two tenants, and the, there's two stores in the property. Each one's about 1,300 square feet. At one time, one tenant occupied it before my dad owned it, but that person had to cut it back. It's hard to rent large stores, and, and down the street and so on, people cut up their stores in order to be able to rent them out easily. The, we, like, like, I think both sides of the aisle, we want to keep Montrose the way it is. We wanted to have the nice, small-town atmosphere that it has, and I don't think it's going to change. And I think the city of Glendale has done a great job maintaining it and keeping it that way. And I really like your supervision over it. I don't want any other restrictions put on it, I think they're unnecessary. My father feels the same way. And my dad's been in Glendale since 1948, and I was born in Glendale. I raised my kids in, in La Crescenta. And so that's the thing. It's just a good community. I think that some people have been concerned about recent developments, that it's unsubstantiated and not, it's not true. And so you get excited about it, and you get fearful of that things are going to change. And what we've got here is, it's something that, that has been, whether it's been intentional or not, has happened, a fear factor, and it's unwarranted. And please, don't slam dunk us with these regulations and so on, for something that is, is smoke. You know, it's not really true. And, but the thing is, we're a community. And I have friends and acquaintances on both sides of the aisle. And I think that this situation should be resolved in a, in a community way, so that, so that people can get together and, and come up with a, a solution to this perceived problem. I don't think it is a problem. I think, I think people should talk in the community and get this thing resolved. Thank you.
If nothing else, all this TV exposure, more people are going to be going to find out what Botrose is all about. That's for sure. It's the most pleasant you all had. Mary Leroux, followed by Bruce Meyer.
Free advertising.
Yeah.
I'm Mary Leroux. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Mary Leroux, and I am the owner of 2262, 64, and 66 Honolulu. I've owned this property for over 20 years, and I'm very fortunate to have very long tenant, tenants. I have no plans to sell the property, and I do not plan on remodeling it. It was only in yesterday's paper that I learned of the report requested by the City Council on rezoning options affecting the property. As a property owner, I have received no direct communication from the city advising of such an agenda item on this evening's meeting. I'm vitally interested in the future of this community, as are all the other owners. And I believe that we as owners should be involved with these decisions, as well as the tenants and neighbors. I've seen a flyer suggesting that the new property owners are planning to make changes to their property, which would radically change the character of this community. Having been in touch with at least three of them, I do not believe this to be true. And I'm concerned that the inflammatory items, such as I have seen, may cause a hasty decision without due consideration of the ramifications of the various options. Therefore, I'm requesting that, before any further discussions or actions affecting our properties be taken by the council, that as property owners, we be provided with full information and be consulted about the various options being considered. Options such as downzoning or creating a historic district might place significant restrictions in our property, and we need more time to get the facts. Thank you.
Just to clarify back, back a couple of months ago, all these rumors start floating, like there's rumors floating all over this town about everybody and everything in the town. When all these rumors hit, because I think we all care for Montrose area and want it like it is, wanted to rein in the rumors. That's why I asked staff to give a report, are any of these rumors true or false? And so it's not that we're telling staff to do anything yet, we may tonight, depending on what the majority want. This is to find out, are the rumors true or false? I mean, we saw these flyers, you know, we saw a couple of them down here. So now we're trying to get to the bottom of the rumors. I think that's going to shake out here tonight. Bruce Meyer, followed by Christopher Suarez.
Hi, Bruce Meyer, Mayor Weaver, City Council. And thank you to Andy for letting me know. I'm, I'm the new owner in town.
Oh.
And I, my building seems to be the poster child of this...
What's the number?
It's the, once upon a time.
Do you have this?
It's 2280, I believe. We start at 2274. And, and I'm, I'm a retailer. I've, I've been in a family business for 40 years, so I appreciate the feeling that the retailers are going through as well. The threat from developers is what I've been reading about, and, and it came as a complete shock to me, because I'm a preservationist. I've helped establish historic buildings, ordinance in Beverly Hills. I have two historic buildings in Pasadena.
She needs you on her committee.
Yeah. Well, and that's why I think that, you know, the property owners, and I've spent some time on Saturday at the art, at the art fair, talking with the historic, the preservation group, and we had a terrific dialogue. And I, and I bought here because I love the charm of the area. And I have absolutely no intention of tearing anything down. And my building, as I say, is the poster child, the outside developer coming in, and it just came as a complete surprise when, when Andy told me about this. It's a beautiful area. I think it's, it's a big mistake to restrict use, and I think that the, the guidelines that are in effect right now handle it beautifully. And, and as I say, I, I love the area, the residents that I've met, I think, are terrific, and they're concerned, but I think their concerns are built on, on, you know, like rumor. And, and as I say, I'm, I don't know what more I can say, but I appreciate it, and I appreciate your time.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Yusef.
The property that you've owned, do you have any plans in remodeling facelifts, anything to it?
Yes. The, the one where it starts with Tom's Bargains, Valoren goes to Austin Drugs, I want to, I wanted to purchase some of the historic pictures, because I would like to see it look more like it was. So I do have some thoughts in mind about putting a new facade on it, but as far as adding any floors or residential or any square footage, no. I, I, you know, I'm chairman of an automotive museum in Los Angeles, I, my whole life has been about preservation, so. And as I say, I seem to be the poster child, and I have, the rumors that are going on about me, when I walk down the, the street, they say, you're the developer! And I thought, my God, I've never developed anything, I've just preserved, so.
Oh, God. Not only you're a developer, you're also evil, remember that.
Yeah, that's right.
Let's, let's, let's go one more step, and, and the other question I was going to ask you. You heard all these rumors and innuendos. Did you get any of this pamphlets?
No, it was only through, through Andy that, that contacted me.
So somebody contacted you and told you about it?
Absolutely, yeah. And, but now that I've...
So you don't know the source of all these rumors?
Well, I've learned a little bit more about it, but I think it'll maybe come out tonight, because I think a lot of people are talking, and maybe they have something, know something we don't as the property owners. But as far as I can tell, to have change of ownership and to bring vitality into the area is just germane to keeping the area alive and well. And, and, you know, family businesses and mom-and-pop stores are kind of buzzwords, and, I mean, all stores kind of started as a mom-and-pop, and, and, you know, I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Where do you live?
I live in the West Los Angeles area.
Oh, but you're going to speak up here a lot?
The outside.
Yeah, I'm an outsider, I'll confess, but I...
The outside evil developer.
They have antique auto show up there every year, so you ought to get involved in that.
I would.
We have historical issues, you ought to get involved in that.
I'd love to bring a car, absolutely.
Spend some time over here.
No, I, I didn't just randomly just pick that spot, you know? I mean, I did a lot of homework, and I studied it, and I, and I enjoy the, the residence. I love the community spirit. We have, I feel that we've done the same thing in South Pasadena and Pasadena, and I just, I just really like the entire area, and hopefully we can all work together, that's the...
Welcome to Glendale.
Thank you very much.
What kind of retailer?
It's gifts, china, silver, crystal. We actually had a store in Glendale when I, in the 50s, called Geary's, and then it became George's, and then it went away. Way, you know?
Where was located?
It was on brand. It's been a while, you know, I've actually, I've...
Mr. Weaver knows all of those.
Yeah.
Been here forever.
It was in, it was in the mid-50s.
Mid-50s.
Yeah.
I was in high school, so, just trying to place it.
Thank you.
So was I.
Thank you very much. Christopher Suarez, followed by Randy Gonzalez.
Mayor, Council, my name's Chris Suarez, and I own the building at 2265 Honolulu, which is the Bar Rue and the Paper Rabbit. And I think I have the unique distinction of having the only building with residences still above on the second floor, so I think I have the only mixed-use building. When I bought it, you know, there was a lot of opposition in terms of what I did with the bar. I think some of you have seen it, or what I did with the facade, and what I did with the apartments upstairs. I think people thought you should convert them to offices. It might have been the economical or the best thing to do in terms of rent per square foot, but I chose to renovate it and restore it. I live in Spar Heights, I was raised in Spar Heights, and I own a few other properties in Spar Heights and in Montrose that I restored and renovated. And I'm real happy with where the town is. I think I'm real proud of it, and I think it's the best it's ever been. And I fought things like hillside development, I'm very conscientious of things that are happening in town, and I have all the same concerns that everyone here has. But I am very much against some of the things that are being proposed tonight, especially when I see specifically some of the, the, the information I get at my home. I got a lot of these things at my home, because I'm a homeowner in Spar Heights, but I didn't get them at my business as a building owner. And a lot of them allude to some of the turnover in town, and because I know some of the things that are happening in town, a lot of those are trust sales. Like what you said, it's tax assessor information, so that's any transfer, that could be some sort of a trust thing. So several of the buildings on your list are actually not any transfers and don't really have any significant change involving them. And those are the types of facts that some of these flyers are sort of using or manipulating to their benefit. And I'm just concerned now, I think that everything's gone so well, the way it is, I'd hate to see you guys come in and maybe do something that's not necessary, that could impact it negatively. You know, sometimes when things are working, don't fix it.
So you want government out of your business?
A little bit, yeah.
So come right out and say it.
That's what I want, thank you.
Thank you very much. Randy Gonzalez, followed by Loller, Millie.
Hello, Mayor Weaver and Council, my name is Randy Gonzalez. I've been a commercial real estate broker in Montrose for about the past 15 years. I've been a former member of the Montrose Shopping Park Association. I do currently own property and businesses in Montrose, just outside of the district that you're talking about.
2400 block?
We're actually on Verdugo, right next to the mobile gas station. 2138 Verdugo, New Moon Restaurants, Whore Coffee. We just did a big renovation to our building that the community has just really been supportive of, because that was a real eyesore there, if any of you know, for many years. I actually stand to benefit by the extra regulation that you might put on the shopping park, but I'm still opposed to it, so figure that out.
Opposed to it.
I just want to say that, you know, I do know a lot of the owners in town, new ones, old ones, many of the business owners, and I, I kind of echo what you've heard before me, that the, the threat, the imminent danger is not there, and it's been unverified, as far as we know. I think it's a great idea to take some steps to possibly preserve the community, ensure its survival and growth, but I can tell you that Montrose has never been healthier as a real estate market. A lot of great businesses have come in, and the community has been very supportive, and that, to me, is always an indication that the community wants what's happening and the change that's happening. the community wants what's happening and the change that's happening. Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf, for instance, one of the dreaded chains, from what I understand, that's one of their most successful stores.
Really?
So I don't think the people are coming from Burbank and Pasadena to get their coffee. I think they're coming from Spar Heights and the surrounding communities. So things up there, I think, are very, very healthy. And one thing I'd like to point out that no one's really touched on, and I do have some firsthand experience, many of the buildings in Montrose are built lot line to lot line. Five thousand-foot building on a 5,000-foot lot, which by today's codes is not allowed. If you bulldoze that building, you're going to now lose your grandfather clause and you're going to have to abide by parking, density, setbacks. Thus why no one's done this in the past. This isn't some new idea. It's almost impossible to do. Possibly? You know, I would say there's a small, small possibility, but certainly not an imminent threat and nothing we need to rush into as far as immediate regulation to try to stop this. Because I think, as you're hearing now from some of the new owners, there is nobody with tractors idling out there ready to bulldoze any of these buildings.
You'd have to buy a number of contiguous parcels and assemble.
And even so, you'd be tearing down so much square footage, you wouldn't be able to put it back. And if you go talk to Howard Malis over in zoning and run it by him, and he'll explain to you that...
We know. It'd be stupid.
Exactly. So you have great regulation in place that's done a great job. And I think that we just need to slow down a little bit, figure out a little more on this historical thing, and go from there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Another question, since you happen to be a real estate agent and apparently you operate in that area, has there been any unusual movements that you have seen in the last couple of years, let's say, not to say...
Movements?
As far as...
Rents and values and things.
Selling and buying and...
Well, I can tell you for...
Have you had any evil outside developers come to you and ask you to buy this so they could tear it down and build this?
Right. Well, there has definitely been a lot of activity lately, but for many, many years, there was zero activity and many vacancies. And nobody held any emergency meetings to figure out how to lease these buildings that these owners had to carry for years that were vacant. And I think now there's been a little correction in the values in Montrose are more consistent with the values of the homes in the area, the demographics of the residents of the homes, their incomes. And typically, those values go hand in hand, property and commercial.
So would you...
And Montrose was out of plaque for a long time.
Would you say that because the way the economy has moved, a lot of the old owners are deciding now that the economy is right and the values are right, let me take my equity out and they're selling?
That's a lot of it, I think. And a lot of, you know, buildings have been in the family for so many years. There were no mortgages on them. Property tax base was so low, it was so easy to just keep them because it didn't cost any money. And now, you know, owners are getting older. They want to retire. And much like some of the owners now who are saying, you know, this is future nest eggs for our family, well, it's just part of that cycle. You know, they bought these buildings 40 years ago, 30 years ago. Some of them are selling. I don't think it's an alarming rate at all. I think the lease rates and the property values are consistent with Glendale, Pasadena, Burbank.
And how long have you been operating out of that area as a real estate agent?
I've been working in the market for close to 15 years.
15 years in the Montrose area as a real estate broker?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Lawler, followed by... Oh, you're out. Fair enough. Camille Reed, followed by Marco Vallay. Vallay, I guess.
Good evening, council members and those present. I'm going to identify myself as one of the old owners, but I'm probably not going to admit to that. My family has owned commercial property...
Wait, wait. You didn't identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Camille Reed. Okay. My family has been a commercial property owner in Montrose for over 20 years. We own property in the 2400 block, specifically 2428 and 2430. There are four units there, DeFranco's, Patty's Closet, and the sushi place and the community center. And we also own an apartment building in the 2300 block of Florencita. We originally bought this property in Montrose because we liked the hometown feel and its general character. Despite the recent flyers, which have been produced and circulated around Montrose and the surrounding areas, we have no present intention to sell our properties or to tear any buildings down, nor would we support the construction of any overly large or inappropriate building in Montrose. We're very pleased that there are new owners and businesses coming into Montrose. For the first time, and I was figuring this out the other day, there in over three years, all of the properties along Honolulu Boulevard will be inhabited by a business concern, which we think is just great. That's marvelous. In the investigative report that was produced by Elaine Wilkinson in Planning Department regarding the Montrose area, in the last paragraph of the analysis section, it states that there does not appear to be an identifiable pattern of specific change or course of change based on planning applications. So far, the number of ZUCs appears to be fairly stable from year to year. Also, no single tenant space appears to have constant turnover. Likewise, to date, there has been no surge in the number of development applications such as variance CUPs or design review. Additionally, in the last sentence of the summary portion, it states, "This report gives a summary of recent activity as shown in the city permits and some potential options for council to consider to reduce uncertainty in the area." Conclusively, what I conclude from that is that there's no finding of fact based on the Planning Department report that necessitates any immediate action. The only basis for action would be to reduce the uncertainty in the area. So let's establish where that uncertainty has come from. Based on what you've heard today from others, from the others that have spoken, and from the Planning Department report, it's false. It's based on a false presumption of the interests, of the intentions of one group of people that's been presented by another group of people. Additionally, this uncertainty establishes, I feel, an agenda which specifically promotes the preservation of a select few, and it doesn't address the community as a whole.
Were you involved at all, called, asked to participate in any meetings, anything?
No.
How'd you find out about this?
I was first contacted by Andy and the Property Owners Association. And it was last week on May 31st when I was first given a copy of this flyer. But living down there, or, well, I don't live down there, but I'm down there, I would say, three times a week at least to do business down there. I was never given any kind of information at all.
Thank you.
Okay. I would really want to say too, in closing, that I would really ask that you just let calmer minds prevail tonight. Let's take a step back. Let's slow down. Let's not decide anything definitive this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I doubt that'll happen tonight. Marco Vallay, followed by Joseph Young. Did I say that right?
Vallay.
Vallay.
Spanish for valley. Good evening. My name's Marco Vallay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The last time I was here before this distinguished chamber was about a year and a half ago. And because I had created a flyer based on a rumor that was spreading in the Montrose Shopping Park, that the tax, the taxes on the business owners was just going to increase dramatically. And my wife and I were living on Montrose Avenue at the time. We've both grown up in La Cañada. I've lived in Glendale and Montrose. And she was working at a salon there in Montrose. And so, being the good husband that I am, I created a flyer that really just gave it to the city and anyone else that was behind this terrible plan. And I came here to the city council meeting, just really ready to, you know, do a sort of a...
Number on us.
Yeah, yeah. A modern version of Mr. Smith Goes to Washington. And I was very, very impressed with the, what actually was happening, that it was sort of an equalization of the way the taxes were being assessed there in the shopping park. And I came up here and basically said that I was responsible for the flyer. You guys probably have. Sorry about that. But all that to say that I'm here because I, my wife and I were at the crafts show over the weekend. And I spoke to a very warm gentleman who was there manning a booth and passing out these postcards and whatnot that we all sent to Elaine. And I really very much appreciated, I appreciate what the dialogue that has come about through this, although so much has already been shared tonight that I agree with, and I'm sure so much more will as well. So I'll just share two brief thoughts that I have. Number one, I wouldn't really call this a dialogue so much as probably a brewing debate and sort of rebuttal, as I'm expecting those that aren't owners to come up and share their opinions. And I perceive that it would be really beneficial if there were some kind of community forum. Because all of us do love Montrose. We love the quaintness of it. We love to walk our dogs and meet our neighbors there. And so there is a lot of fear and concern about what might happen if, if our government doesn't protect us. And now, having not met personally, but having listened to some of these business owners, I'm overjoyed to hear what their perspectives are, that they are, they are members of our community. They are my neighbors. And so perhaps there might be some really good thing to come out of this, where there might be community forums or groups where we can talk about what we love about Montrose and we'd like to see in the future. My second thought is that I think it would be kind of neat to have some more mixed use going on in Montrose. I just think it would need to be controlled. I don't think growth is necessarily bad, just how it is done. Thank you.
Thank you.
But you didn't have anything to do with any of these?
Not this time.
Okay.
Maybe next year.
I want to know if there was your finger thing.
Thank you.
Joseph Young, followed by John Drayman.
Hello, Mayor Weaver and members of the council. I'm not a building owner. I'm a resident of Montrose. And when I heard about, you know, I saw the flyers and heard about all this going on, I was very concerned about it. I think that the Montrose Park Shopping, or Montrose Shopping Park, excuse me, is a, it's a very special place. I think that probably in the Los Angeles area at least, it's a unique place. I don't know of any other place where you can find so many unique stores and so many things going on. Every Sunday, the harvest markets and the fairs that go on there. I chose to live in Montrose partly because I so appreciate all that the Montrose Park Shopping Center has to offer. And so I would really hate to see any of that change. I, as I said, that I think that the uniqueness of the stores is really the strong part of it. And for that reason, I think that it would really be a shame if a lot of the stores were to change over to chain stores and therefore become like, you know, most any other shopping area that you find. I'd like to say that I agree with just about everything the previous speaker said. And, and also, especially about things like mixed use, I don't think that there's anything wrong with mixed use if it's, if it's done properly. And also, I think that, that the owners have been very reassuring in what they've said. My only concern right now, though, is what was said, is if they're not planning on changing anything, why are they so concerned about the possibility of changing the zoning or any other things that you might consider? Now, I really don't know that much about the situation other than what I've heard from the flyer and just the rumors. And so I couldn't make any recommendation to the council about what should be done. But, but like I said, I think that it is important to, you know, to look at all of, all of the facts and, and just make sure that everyone's interest is covered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Drayman, followed by Adam Wing.
Good evening. My name is John Drayman. I'm the president of the Montrose Shopping Park Association. And thank you for your time. I'm sorry to tell you, I'm not the evil one either, because I didn't write those flyers either. But I have a suspicion you will hear that from the person who did. Anyway, what I'm going to say may surprise you. It might surprise some of you as well, because I don't think there's that much disagreement in this room. I don't disagree terribly with what I'm hearing from the property owners. And I have been saying for, to anyone who would listen to me on this subject, that as far as I can tell, the interests of the Montrose Preservation Coalition, and Mr. Councilman Najarian, you had asked who they are, and you'll hear some of them tonight, has been, A, not to prop up or change or limit rents per square foot. I believe they're below market. And I believe probably, most of the property owners believe so too. Has that caused in the past some businesses that we all love to go away? Yes, it has. There are many businesses in Montrose that I find it very sad. They're not there. At Myers Bakery, the Pickle Barrel Sandwich Shop. There's lots of them. And by the way, Mr. Myers, my mother owns a great deal of giftware still from George's on Bren Boulevard. The thing of it is simply that we are asking for council to craft a way through this. There are concerns by property owners in the community, both in the incorporated and unincorporated areas that abut the shopping park, who have purchased in the area specifically for the pace and scale of life there, for the setting. And they have interests too. They are property owners as well. They have property rights as well. There's the, it's not surprising to say, well, gosh, property owners are going to oppose in general more regulation. Business owners are sort of in the middle because they pay their rents to those folks. And residents have some expectations to enjoy resources in the community where they purchased their homes. So what we're asking is that all of you work with commercial property owners, residents in the area, business owners, the representatives of businesses, such as the Montrose Shopping Park Association and the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce, to craft something that will, as Mr. Weaver put in the paper, said in the paper, look at this situation to see whether there's something we need to do to close the barn doors before the horse gets out. I know that it might even shock Mr. Mayor Weaver to know that I agree with him on that point, but I do. The other thing I wanted to say is there was some concern about 2295 Honolulu Avenue. That did sell, and it was just recent. Mr. Councilman Yusefian, you said that was incorrect because Ms. Wilkinson told you that it had not sold. My business is in that building along with six other units, and it was sold. That was a situation where the owner of Faze had to purchase the property from her own trust because the other members of that trust wanted to sell it for more money than she could afford in order to continue to operate her own business. So she was forced to purchase it. And so...
So it was a transfer?
Pardon me?
It was a transfer. It was a purchase through a trust to a trust. So it wasn't somebody else from outside?
Yes, she had to purchase it, she had to purchase it in order to keep it from going outside of the family.
Right. Because the other members of the trust wanted more money to buy them out.
Exactly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Yusefian.
I have a question from Mr. Drayman. So Drayman, you raised a very interesting issue in here. And I'd like to put the question in your lap. You said you would like to see us do something and close the barn door before the horses leave.
That's my quote.
And that's Mr. Weaver's thing. And you agree with him. So I'm assuming that you are of the same mindset. Based on what we have so heard so far, and based on the staff reports and analysis for, since 2001, what's the problem? There is nobody walking through the door. There's no horses trying to leave.
Well, here's the answer to the question. There are still leases in place. For example, some of the people you have heard tonight said they only found out about this through Andy McClure. But those same people attended meetings that I was present at a month ago. So that's not, and they spoke at those meetings and were on the record at that time in the newspaper for stating that they were in favor of state historic districting because of the benefits that it provided them as new property owners, such as property tax credits and so on. What Mr. Weaver's quote was, "This is a possible wake-up call for us to move now rather than later, to shut the door of the barn before the horse gets, gets away." And the fact that no one who has purchased a building recently, who still has leases, active leases, has applied to demolish a building is really not the issue. The issue is what is the long-term goal? What is the long-term goal of preserving a type of culture of single proprietorship? And I think that's the unique value of Montrose. And I think that is worth preserving.
Let me ask you another thing that in the staff report, some people are asking about, and some of the options that are put in there. As far as the options are concerned, are you for or against examining limits on the chain stores?
Well, we've always had chain stores, as many of them have mentioned. Everything from Mrs. Larue spoke, one of her buildings was a moto de dress shop. Some of you may be old enough to remember those. We've had 31 Flavors. We've had Winchell's Donuts. We've had JCPenney's. We've had a number, Western Auto. And we have some chain stores now. We have banks.
Yeah.
But, but the point is...
That's where I go, by the way, all the time.
I know you do. But the point is, many of those chains, that was a long time ago, and many of those chains were scaled to the size and pace of the town. Robert Uhana, who owns the building where Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf is, which has been referred to a number of times, is a good fit for the town, in my opinion, too. But Robert turned down a number of other options in order to get to that point. And some of those were larger operations. So what I'm saying to you is that I prefer, if you're asking me, I prefer that we craft a means of looking at the zoning, seeing what works and what doesn't work, what is appropriate for now, and more importantly, what's appropriate for the future. In the last number of years, we have looked primarily at use issues with return, with regard to the zoning. You know, the community says, "We don't want a billiard parlor," or "We don't want a tattoo parlor." It's dealt mainly with use. We haven't really looked at building. And as you all know, because this is mixed use and something we talk about now, just as you point out, Councilman Yusefian, it's kind of an old concept, really, both in this country and in Europe, mixed use. It is a new trend in terms of small neighborhood business districts that are becoming very commercialized. And you can see that in the other districts around us, like Sierra Madre Village, which when I was growing up was the Tiffany Neighborhood Business District. But now it has a, it has a Domino's Pizza in it, in place of the old pizza parlor that was there. It has the Cold Stone, which put the, the historic building that housed the ice cream parlor out of business. Those things can all be fine, but I think we need a plan for that, for the future.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add one other thing. The Beckenhour's Building, that wonderful house, it used to have the Jiffy Button Hole Company in it, which I think is my favorite business name all the years. They made button holes.
I'm just curious, how many were at these meetings? Show of hands?
Which meetings?
Well, the meetings that Mr. Drayman spoke to. Okay, there's a few of you there.
I'm just curious. No, did they sell those button holes with or without the buttons?
You took them to buttons and they knocked the holes in them.
And how many of you belong to this coalition? Show of hands? Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Adam Wing, followed by Dale Dawson. Next speaker is Adam Wing, followed by Dale Dawson. How many belong to the coalition? That was the question. Adam Wing, followed by Dale Dawson.
Evening.
Evening.
For over 22 years, I've been a resident of Montrose, and as such, have come to appreciate the idyllic atmosphere and small-town charm which our community prides itself on. And nothing embodies these traits more aptly than the Montrose Shopping Park. In recent history, however, I've also had the opportunity to view the shopping park from a fiscal standpoint, as an employee at three different retail establishments on or near Honolulu Boulevard. Needless to say, I find myself conflicted over the potential risks and benefits of modifying the park's structure and dynamics. As a resident, I understand the inherent opposition to possible changes. Our unique assortment of privately-owned boutiques, restaurants, and specialized services has always been a welcome alternative to the litany of generic franchises that permeate most of our neighboring cities. Business here is conducted with the highest regard for the personal touch. That is to say, our merchants display a collective sense of concern, respect, and attention, which extends beyond the potential for monetary gain. The customers here are treated in the same fashion as our friends and neighbors, because oftentimes, they are one and the same. By the same token, I can also appreciate the needs and concerns of business owners and developers. This is, after all, a shopping park, and the potential for increased or sustained business volume is always an attractive venture. However, that being said, what developers and business owners must realize is that the allure of the shopping park is its inherent format. The fact that it is the antithesis to the large, high-traffic, commercial establishments that can be found anywhere and everywhere else. The alteration of this infrastructure would be more than detrimental than profitable. Change is inevitable, but progress is always conditional, and developers would be doing themselves a tremendous disservice by changing the nature of the park. In closing, I can't say with absolute certainty that the literature and the flyers that were recently distributed are of complete validity, or that the claims that were presented here tonight by the business owners will be adhered to in the future. But whatever the case may be, I strongly urge the council to consider amending current zoning of the Montrose Shopping Park in an effort to regulate building height limits and multiple-floor construction for long term. It is, in my opinion, the best way to satisfy the needs of merchants and residents alike.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dale Dawson, followed by Tim Jacob. Are there any more cards? After this, no more cards.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff. My name is Dale Dawson. I'm speaking not tonight as a member of the Montrose Shopping Park Board of Directors, but as a, well, as I found out tonight, a chain store owner in Montrose. So I have Mountain Rose Gifts. I don't think there's another location, but I think we've redefined chain store tonight. I think what we have to be careful of doing here is creating an adversarial relationship with the components in this room. And I don't think that that should be anyone's intention. I, for one, don't equate property owner or developer or LLC with the word evil. That's not the way I look at it. My property owner, my new property owner, spoke to you earlier this evening, has expressed a desire to restore rather than destroy, and I would hope that would be the intent of every property owner. I think a lot of what triggered this whole, if I may call it a movement, and any movement carries with it a little bit of inflammatory rhetoric, a little bit of emotion, that's inevitable. We have to sort through that and see what's real and what's not. What's real is that commercial buildings that have not sold for decades have suddenly sold at very high property prices in keeping with the market today. Passing along property tax increases to small business owners, some of whom can absorb them, some cannot. We understand that there is an evolution in the mercantile world that is going to happen no matter what any of us does here tonight. The store that I occupy with Mountain Rose Gifts used to be the Typewriter Center. I don't think that would be viable today. So we understand that. Like the button hole company, certain things are going to move on, and that's okay. All we're asking council to do is support the efforts of the entire community, and I think there's enough of a broad spectrum of interest represented there between community associations, historical societies, and business ownerships and so forth. And by the way, some property owners who, for all intents and purposes to this point, had been in our corner on the historical districting aspects of things. But I think as things progress, people's minds go back and forth. What I think we'd like to see is that the change is coming. We know it's coming. It's inevitable. We'd like the city to partner with all of these entities in managing the growth, managing and controlling the growth, so that it makes sense, so that no one does anything strange or stupid to a wonderful old building or the character of the town. And I, for one, am overjoyed to hear all the property owners who spoke here tonight say they're in total agreement with us as to their vision for Montrose. It's the same as ours. So maybe we have no problem. But then again, we have a situation in Iran where they say, you have no problem, we're developing uranium simply to create power plants. And we're on the other hand saying, maybe that's not their ultimate purpose. Maybe we ought to put in some safeguards now before they create the bomb. That's what we're trying to say. Thank you.
I got a response to this one. I got a response to this one.
Mr. Yusefian, you got some...
Oh, this one's going to be a good one. I was from Iran, and I can tell you, Montrose is no Iran. I couldn't resist that.
Amen. Thank you.
You mean Iran is no Montrose?
Thank God. Montrose is no Iran. That's all I could tell you.
Okay. With that little levity, Tim Jacob, followed by Joel Tatum.
Mayor Weaver, council members, community, not everyone has one of these, and you said something about...
Yeah, maybe I should have, but we only have one police officer here.
I turned...
I voted by mail, by the way. I gave mine to Mrs. Starbird.
Yeah, I believe you. I believe you.
I did.
I turned 60 this year, and kind of interesting that all of these, looking back, looking forwards, looking sideways, are coming up. First place I lived was at the corner of Floroncita and Ocean View. When I grew up in the early '50s, the dreaded shopping bag, the huge behemoth in the middle of Montrose, sat there and ate up the little local mom-and-pop grocery stores. That store was gigantic. It was huge. People were afraid of it. Across the street were two Five and Dimes. Chain Five and Dimes, two of them. Kresge's? Come on, don't talk in my ear. We'll talk later. There was a Penny's down the store. Penny's, that's a big company even today. Big company in Montrose. Just because I'm 60 doesn't mean that I should be preserved, maybe. No matter what we do in Montrose, there will be change. I can't stop it. You can't stop it. Somebody that wants to develop can't stop it. Somebody that wants to keep it the same can't stop it. It just is going to change. I do think that there is something that the city council can do, which is very, very valuable, and is probably its main purpose as a governmental entity, and that is to provide a source for dialogue, to provide a place where people of differing views can bring them, can bring their best ideas, can show the problems with some of the concepts, and move together so that we're working in tandem, that our horse may be out of the barn, but it lives in a harness, and it's going somewhere we want it to go. I'm going to mention, as I close, two things, or one specific thing, that's very, very important to me. And if you turn to page nine, it talks about parking, and it has a little blurb about the city has to approve kind of things. If you turn back to the maps, you'll see that Parking Space Eight is the old Ford property. It says it has 85 spots. It has 83, 39 on the one side, and 44 on the other. It says it has one handicap spot. It actually has four. But what it does not have is anything whatsoever on the footprint of the old Ford property. It's laying fallow.
Thank you very much. Okay, Joel Tatum, followed by Michael Morgan.
Mayor, council, I actually, my name's Joel Tatum, and I'm a resident in the Montrose/Glendale area. I think our house actually is one block away from officially being in the Montrose area. And I really hadn't planned on speaking until I'd heard some of the arguments being placed, and I thought I would give a residence perspective, or at least this residence perspective, and voice some of our neighbors' feelings and thoughts. We, too, got some of the flyers and the pamphlets that were handed out. And I don't know that any of us were really kind of, oh, my gosh, what's going to happen, and kind of alarmed or anything, but we were, as usually, you know, normally seasoned human beings who have seen their fair share of human activity, kind of just went, hmm, maybe we should check into this, and maybe we should be concerned. And I think I come to this in an unusual kind of a sense. I come as a commercial property owner from Chicago, 15 years, and Los Angeles, and now in Montrose. And I think that my concern really is that, no, I don't think that the troops are at the door, and I don't believe that any of these property owners have bad intentions. But I also know that life happens. And I know that oftentimes with real estate, what is really beneficial as a property owner is time. And that 15 years down the road, things have changed, zones have changed, and suddenly this can be a mall. And I think that's where the property owners who are residents, that's where the seat of their concern, and that's where we'd like to have that addressed. And I don't know if it's the proper form of addressing this is going to be the historic districting, or if it's some formula that you find folks come up with for protecting all the rights of the property owners. But I think it is that sense of time. Yes, property owners, developers, that's really the great thing about property and real estate, is that you have time on your side. I have a great sense about you and this forum. It was really a great opportunity to be here, and I wanted to thank you very much for this opportunity. However you people have developed this is just wonderful. Coming from Los Angeles and Chicago, it's a breath of fresh air. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, we're doing something right.
Maybe. Michael Morgan, followed by Melanie McKinnell.
Wait.
Oh, I see.
I'm a 51-year resident of Glendale and 25-year resident of Montrose. I'm actually in Spar Heights. I didn't intend to speak tonight, so I didn't really write a speech, but I would like to bring up some things that were mentioned tonight. I am the gentleman who produced the first flyer, the one that I no longer have any copies of.
This one?
No. I did produce that one also, but we'll get to that in a second.
This one?
That one right there, the one that says, preserve Old Town Montrose. When that, yeah, I think that's, I'd have to take a look at it. I know the front side. I don't remember what the backside said on it. I was the one who produced it, and the reason I produced it is I did want a dialogue. It was never, a lady earlier sent that these were outright lies. When that was produced, the attempt was to have people come to a community meeting, of which many of the developers were there, the community was there, it was put in the paper, there were over 120 to 150 people. We never counted how many. The Montrose Preservation Coalition has never hidden, that flyer was put on every store that I could put on. It was put in the newspaper. We tried to get everybody there. We wanted a forum for everybody to see what was going on and to have everybody speak. It was never mentioned, this way, evil developers was never mentioned. You won't find evil developers in any of that. After, we heard some of the developers speak, we then produced another card. Nowhere in there does it say that the buildings will be torn down. This was the card that over 508 people signed last weekend. I stood in a booth for all weekend long.
Sir, just, there's going to be more time we need it. You did not exaggerate in these handouts? Montrose is in danger of rampant development? That's not an exaggeration?
It's a, no, I don't feel it's, no.
You wanted dialogue, so you wrote this?
I did. I did.
And then council...
I never said it, I never said they were tearing the buildings down.
You said rampant development.
Well, until I see differently, yeah. Okay. We're hearing it tonight, okay?
Look at the staff report.
But it was not, well, I just got the staff report today.
I know, but...
Okay. The big thing is, the thing that we were asking for is that buildings be amended as to building height. That was the only thing we're asking. That's the only thing that you could ask. As been mentioned before, things do change. Buildings are going to be sold. I know a lot of the store owners up there, and they are hurting very badly right at the moment. Many of them have been hit not with property, not with rent increases, but with property tax increases.
Can you name a developer that, who has stated an intent to radically alter portions of the shopping park? Can you name one? Can you off the staff one, if you don't want to put it on TV?
No, not at this moment. Not at this moment. I can't give you a...
Did you put that in here, too?
I did. And I will stand by it.
Hi, Purban.
Okay.
Okay. Anyway, the first thing was to encourage dialogue, of which we did have over 120, 150 people at the Montrose Community Center, of which we paid for the building. It wasn't paid for by the city. It was paid by individuals so that everybody could be there and hear both sides of the Anyway, I wanted to, well, we've already said that. Okay. I just wanted to mention one last thing. When we're talking about areas, Broadway, which is just right out here, was considered Glendale's premier historic street. If you go to look at Broadway right at the moment, it was a street that had mixed use, it had theaters, it had markets. And you look at it today, it's empty. There's nothing historic about it. Things do change. Things don't stay the same forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All I can say is, in the history of any community, including Glendale, before there was historical districts and other concerned citizens that want to preserve, things changed. I've lived here 67 years.
I've lived here 51.
And I've watched, I know. I've watched building after building after building go down in my lifetime here and wondered why.
And we do, too.
Name one that everybody knows, the original Boss Big Boy. Gone like that for a strip mall. Where was the community?
And we would like to make sure that that doesn't happen in Montrose. Gone and in, Stan.
That's not going to happen.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, Melanie McKinnell. The last speaker, Dorothy Dash.
My name is Melanie McKinnell, and I live in the Spar Heights area, actually just one block out of it. And I, too, am very encouraged to hear tonight that the property owners have the intention to preserve Montrose the way it is. But I also agree with another speaker who mentioned that these property owners are here for now. We don't know who's going to buy it next year, or five years from now, or 10 years from now. And if we don't, as a community, do something to put safeguards in place so that all of us, the people who have bought it now, the residents, everyone who loves Montrose the way it is, we and you, council, have, I think, an obligation to make sure that we all preserve what is special about Montrose. And I don't have much else to say, except that I do want to go in the record that there's been continual comments this evening against people like myself who want to preserve Montrose by Councilman Yusefian, and putting words into our mouths like evil developers and other condescending remarks, and I take offense to that.
Those are emails I get, generally.
But that does not represent everybody here, and you have made that quite clear whose side you are on.
Well, it's not about that.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Dorothy Dash, and I'm a property owner in Montrose, and we do not want the district to change. Montrose is a charming community. It is a gem in the megalopolis of Los Angeles County. It has individuality. It is not a copy of every mall and shopping center in the area. The following terms have been mentioned at several meetings which we have attended: downzoning, specific plan, historic district. I feel as a property owner, we should know all the pros and cons before any decision is made regarding Montrose. We do not want Montrose to be exploited, but we also do not want to stifle continued success. And we feel that all the groups should work together for the best of Montrose. Thank you.
Very much. That's the last speaker. Mr. Middock, would you like to speak first?
A number of people mentioned a guy named Andy who spoke to them, gave them...
A woman named Andy. Apologize.
I thought they were talking about Andy McClure. McClure?
That's her. Keep talking, keep talking. A-N-D-I.
Oh, what was his name?
Joe.
Joe, okay.
For McClure.
I thought I put him on the spot, but I guess I put myself on the spot.
Good story.
Okay, very good.
Anything else to say?
I don't know. It seems like everybody agrees here. Good of you to come. Thank you for coming. It's great for us to hear what you think. I'm relatively new to Montrose. I'm relatively new to Montrose. I've been going there for a couple of years now. And it is a very interesting area, area in Glendale. I am also concerned about the development, maybe not today, but in the future, as many people mentioned. And I do understand that everyone that's here is well-intentioned. I want to thank you all for coming. Thank you all for being civil about this whole thing. I know sometimes these things get out of hand, and people get very emotional about these issues. I think everyone asks for further dialogue on this issue, and if that's what you want, I think we should have more dialogue, and that's fine. I am concerned about the future development of that area. As many people said, it will change. However, I think there are some very interesting buildings in that area that are historical that should be noted. Some of the other buildings that are not historical, we can certainly look at that. The issue would be, for me, which is very interesting, is the mixed-use issue. Which buildings will be allowed to have one or two additional stories, or would even be financially feasible to have one or two stories on top? I'm personally not opposed to mixed use. Again, some of the buildings should be preserved because they do have the historic value, and some of the buildings shouldn't. If the Historic Society is going forward with the historical designation, they can certainly go forward with it. It's up to the state level. That's where they're choosing to do. At our level, at the city level, I think we should look at some of the zoning issue in there. It will be very difficult to come up with a zoning that's going to please everyone. Well, I'll rephrase it. It'll be very... It'll be impossible to please everyone with the rezoning. But I think with dialogue, with the council, with staff, and with everyone that's here, maybe we can achieve something that is satisfactory to everyone that's concerned about this So, at this point, I'll leave it at that. I'm willing to, you know, continue the dialogue, and I do have some specific things, but in terms of downzoning, but I'll wait to see what the rest of the council and the community comes up with.
Thank you, Mr. Mnuchin. Mr. Yusefian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me tell you where my stand is. I lived in the city for about 30 years. And Montrose is a very unique place, especially the shopping park. My sister-in-law is from Philadelphia. Anytime she came down to Glendale, she didn't want to go to Galleria. I had to take her to Montrose for shopping. And I'm not kidding you, I can swear on a stack of bibles. Because she said, "It is very unique, even in Philadelphia, she didn't find places like that." So, I understand what Montrose is all about. I spent a lot of time in Montrose. As a matter of fact, for a couple of years, lived around that area, and I did most of my grocery shopping at Montrose when the family festival was going on. I bought half of the stuff out of there, including bread. So, used to go there every week, because get fresh bread. The most I have seen change in Montrose was the new complex that got built, that at one point, there was a reading room, and then there was some kind of a church group that came in there and had that strange clock supposedly to be, well, I don't know what it was, very poorly designed, very cheaply designed. That was the biggest eyesore that I saw to that. And it's not impossible to fix, which I think somebody who buys that is going to spend some money fixing that. The other one that I saw recently, not too long ago, within the last four or five years, was Zigs. And I always wondered why that place was called that, and I found out from the owner, that's the name of his dog. That's why he called it that. And he had the barbecue place, Zigs. And I remember, he went, "It was easier to actually get water in the middle of Mojave Desert than what this guy went through just to get the canopy approved through design review." Now, we're talking about a canopy here, folks. Now, if it was that difficult to get that done under new current standards, if you think someone's going to come and put a mixed-use on top of an existing building, I will pay you whatever you want today. Whatever you want today. I'll give you what I have. It's going to be impossible. And I'll tell you why. As a contractor and a builder, I would be stupid to buy a property on Montrose Shopping Park area, that is built property to property, with most of them are either brick, non-reinforced, or later on reinforced, and try to add anything on top of it. And we know in zoning department, and we wrote some of the codes at that time, what the requirement is for you to add square footage. I was on BZA when that new Italian restaurant came in, had just come in, and people were complaining about, gee, the Italian restaurant's coming in here, what we're going to do about this thing? They had no parking. Most of the shops in Honolulu have no parking. They all rely on city parking lots. So, before you expand, or you have a change of use, or anything you want to do, you've got to go through the gauntlet of the planning department. And believe me, it's not fun going through there. And when I was on the BZA, and the people who are there on the BZA today, they just don't hand out all these things that easily. So, you have to prove your case. So, in the end of the day, is Montrose is going to change radically? I'll give you one option that is going to happen. There's a major earthquake of 8.5, and everything falls down. That could happen.
Today is 666, you know?
I know, I know. Today is 666. So, till midnight, that could happen. So, outside of that, I really don't see anybody buying all these properties that are bringing in decent rent, tearing them down, and try to build a mixed-use that's going to be 26 feet high. That is the most craziest thing to any developer, whether evil or not evil, good or bad, I don't know what you call it. It just doesn't pencil out. You're not going to do that. It just doesn't. You won't be able to even meet the parking required on that piece of property. So, it's not going to change. At the most, what you're going to see in Montrose is this: you're going to see facade renovations, some good, some not so good. I wasn't so crazy about the building. I don't know who owns this, the building that had all the rock on the outside, you know, the tiles. You own that?
That's the one we're changing.
Right. Well, and I'll tell you what. It reminds me of, that fits real fine, maybe in Beverly Hills, in some strip, but it didn't belong to what it used to be there. So, outside of that, which is facade renovations, you're not going to see a huge change. You're not going to see five-story buildings there, six-story buildings there. And what you're going to see at the Paradise Fourth Place, it's going to be probably a fire station. That's what you're going to see there, which is going to be probably a one-story building. So, in the end of the day, there is not a lot that is broken. When you look at the current zoning, there is nothing to downzone. Downzone to what? Single-family residential? It's 26 feet, folks. 26 feet tall. That's all you could do. It's lower than your single-family residence, which is 28 feet tall. So, whatever's there, is whatever's there. That guy who converted it into housing, smart move, because he couldn't build them today if even he tried. So, are you going to get a lot of mixed-use development there? I don't think so. Good concept, everybody likes it, but it's not going to pencil out. Nobody's going to go out there and put that money in there, because property values are expensive. You are small, tight areas, you don't have enough room for parking, even if you do subterranean, you can't even turn them around, unless you go there and buy whole blocks at a time. And that's going to be very expensive, and nobody's going to put their money there to go two or three-story when they go somewhere else and they can get 15 stories. So, they're not going to do that. So, your current zoning, which was adopted, I think, in the '70s, when Frank Roberts was around, created a special zone called the CR Zone. That has given Montrose the protection it needed for a long time, for the last 30 years. That's why you are there today. And it has given you enough flexibility to allow the property owners to modify their buildings to a point that they can lease them out, so they don't sit there vacant for many years. And I must tell you, in the last four years, or prior to that, while you had some vacancies, the Montrose property, I mean, the Montrose Shopping Park merchants, they were very instrumental in walking around and working with the owners to fill all of those spaces. So, I think you have a scenario which both sides are really working greatly together, but there's that fear. There's always that fear. Listen, I have a fear that I may catch cancer. We all have that fear. But you don't see me taking MRIs every week and changing certain things, because, you know, you need to deal with some of the issues at a time. You have design review. If anybody wants to tear anything down, they can't, because they have to go through design review before they can tear anything down. When there is going to be any property that is going to be torn down or modified, guess what happens? People within 300 feet are going to get a notice. There's going to be a posting on front of the building saying, "Design review at such and such address." So, all of you, you're very close-knit community, you're going to see that, you're going to show up at design review. And guess what? If you don't like what gets approved, you appeal it, and then you appeal it to council, and we would have to deal with it. So, all the processes are there. So, there is, let me tell you, there is no fire, there's no horse living out the door, off the barn. And I think, I think, I look at this design, I look at this picture, this is what Montrose was probably for many, many years ago. And this picture. And what Montrose is today, it's a little bit different, but you know what? We even put back the lights that used to be like that. So, if you think that we don't care, we really do care about Montrose. It's very unique. It does not raise a lot of money for the city. But we don't do it for the money. Because you can't that... Put value on things just for the money. It's very unique. And I like to keep it unique, and I think it's going to remain unique. So, that's where I'm at. That's why I don't think we need to do anything. Every time government meddles, things get worse. Trust me. And I'm in the government, and I'm telling you that. Trust me. You don't want us to mess around with something that has worked for the last 30 years. That's where I'm at.
It's all yours, Mr. Najarian.
Well, just briefly, Mr. Weaver, during the presentation by staff and by the speakers, I realized that if you consider the city parking lots behind the district that the shopping park entails, I may have a conflict. I have an interest in a piece of real estate, which may be within 500 feet of the city parking lots. I brought that to the city attorney's attention. I'm going to await a final determination as to that. I will not participate in the discussion.
How many properties do you own?
I did not participate, and I will abstain from any vote which takes place today, pending a further determination by the city attorney, to avoid any appearance of impropriety, according to our city's ethics code.
And that's what I was going to comment on, if I may, Mr. Mayor. The preliminary determination is that there is probably not a conflict, but in order to remain safe, my advice to Mr. Najarian was, Councilmember Najarian, was to not participate.
Well, from my perspective, it says, somebody said, "We know what side you're on." Well, I'm on Glendale's side, I'm on Montrose's side. I think everybody wants the same thing, the protection of that area. For how long? As long as we possibly can keep it that way. Yeah, we've seen change in this city. We all have. But I think the current generation is more apt to try to protect historical treasures than we did 10, 20 years ago. Boss Big Boy would still be there if that were true. The sensitivity is that much greater now amongst all the people, not just in Glendale, but all over. So, I don't see it happening. As Mr. Yusefian said, I think the controls are there. In a way, it is a wake-up call, because as the planning department goes through all the different land use provisions and whatever, that's... The mindset has been raised, bar's been raised, be that much more sensitive to that area. If there's anything that staff can see that we should do there, tinkering with, whether it's tinkering with the zoning, the heights, or whatever, we can deal with it. We're just that much more aware of it now. But I haven't heard anything that told me tonight that, oh my gosh, everything is going to blow up, we won't recognize Montrose in a year or two. And looking at the sales, I can see no pattern of buying up a block, because the only way you're going to be able to do anything was buy half a block or block, and we were told that. When I first asked for the report, it's because of all the blasted rumors that were coming in. People coming from Beverly Hills, buying up half blocks and blocks, and they were going to tear everything down. I was, "What the heck is going on?" Well, you hear so many rumors, you want to know what the truth is. The only way I know to get the truth, is sit here and ask staff, "Come back and tell us about the rumors." And then when I read what I just am outraged about, in order to get a meeting, going out and putting out flyers that say rampant development, inflaming the whole community, I just think it's appalling. It just shouldn't happen. Make some noise. All these things. That's the wrong way to get attention. My gosh, we're a civilized community. If you see things wrong, work with it the right way, but don't inflame the whole community and cause something like this. Although, as I said, you're going to get a lot of free publicity out of this, you promoted your area greatly, and since we're on, what do you call it, the video streaming, it's all over the world now. When people come from Russia, whatever, they'll be glad to stop in Montrose. Buses will be coming, from Iran, everywhere. My feeling on Montrose, I mean, people can believe it or not, but I... Outside of... I think it's my favorite part of Glendale, almost. Been up there 20 years. The best way I can prove it, the city manager will back me up, when he got hired, the first thing he wanted to do was go out with the five council members to lunch and just get to know each other. So, it was my turn to take Mr. Starbird out. I says, "I want to show you a different area of Glendale." And I drove him up to Montrose, took him out on Honolulu, and I says, "This is Glendale." He hadn't seen anything like that in Glendale, driving around. And I stood there with him, and I says, "You know, this area needs help. We've got to get more people down here to use the shops." And that was the genesis of the farmer's market coming. He said, "Well, I have an idea, some, we can get a farmer's market up here." And I introduced him to the right people, and that came. Is that true, Mr. Starbird?
With one exception, Mr. Mayor, you took me out, but I had to pay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, do not take me out. No, thank you. I'll pass.
Forgot that part of it. But it is unique. You can't find a place like that up there. And I just can't see it changing overnight. There's some tinkering, yeah, that can probably be done. Staff's aware where those weaknesses might be. I'll leave it to staff to come back and tell us someday on it. As for now, I wouldn't tinker with anything. The false rumors are rumors. There's no rampant development. I've asked, "Show me one. Show me one person, one developer, coming in to do all this damage." This isn't happening. I think you ought to go... I'll go back to Montrose and go to one of the local restaurants, like I'm going to do after this, and have a good dinner and forget about it, except we'll keep an eye on Montrose. we'll keep an eye on Montrose. That's where I stand. If there's no further discussion, this was for give direction.
Mr. Mayor, I do have to go. I do want to apologize to Andy. I grew up with an Andy. That's why Andy is a he. No, Andrew, and I call him Andy, is my, he was my best friend.
She's A-N-D-I.
Yes. So my apologies, I do have to go.
Well, she's just sent you a note.
No, we also have a famous Armenian singer called Andy, so.
Yes. Thank you all for coming. If you'd like to step out while we continue our meeting.
The sheriff in Mayberry was.
Oh, that's right, the sheriff in Mayberry was Andy too.
No direction.
No. Don't fix something is not broken, man. Every time we.
Shh, shh, shh. We're still in session.
I'll take a short recess.
Okay. Five-minute recess, we'll come back. Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen, at 8:25. Let's go back and pick up with five.
Item five is consent items, including minutes of following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed. Mr. Mayor and council, there have been two such requests from the audience.
5E and 5F will be pulled.
I'll move rest of the consent.
Second. Okay. Discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menuchyan, Najarian.
Yes.
Caro, Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Please read 5E and the record.
5E is Director of Public Works regarding Parking Citation Program in the City of Glendale. At E1 is motion authorizing the Director of Public Works to execute a five-year agreement with two one-year extension options with Phoenix Group Information Systems for the Parking Citation Processing, Delinquent Collections and Management of the Preferential Parking Permit Program.
Hey Ned, is that all you were here for? Tonight? Boy. Okay. One speaker, Barry Allen, two minutes. Poor guy stayed here just for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and the public. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. I read over the materials on the parking citation, and I think that giving a five-year contract with two-year, two-one-year extension may be much, because maybe the city and other cities should be talking with the DMV relative to tagging parking tickets on with the license renewals of both drivers and vehicles, and have the state get involved in that particular process. And the city certainly could save that amount of money that you're going to be paying at this particular group. Now, in looking at the cost estimate, and on two companies, you have it based on 100,000 citations, and the other two are based on four, what is it, $4 million worth of revenue. So I would assume somewhere in this report, the, it would show the number of citations that are being turned over to this particular company so that you could be looking at apples versus apples instead of numbers of citations versus the amount of money that's involved. And I think that in that particular matter, that this particular document is flawed, and it hasn't been done properly. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard, looking for accountability. Thank you.
Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Pavolitis was chomping at the bits to answer some of those juicy questions.
You wish to?
I'll try and make it very brief, Mr. Mayor. Lieutenant Carl Pavolitis with the Police Department. The reason that two of the items don't have it listed is based on overall revenue is the way that they chose to bid the package or price their package was based on a percentage of total revenue taken, not on a per-citation processing cost. And so that's our, that is the staff's estimate of what it would cost us based on the revenue we anticipate generating from the parking citation process.
And as far as the DMV?
That is currently done, but, I mean, we still have to process approximately 100,000 parking citations per year. Somebody has to go through and check DMV records, place the hold, pull the hold, and that's what we're hiring the contractor to do.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I would move the item.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menuchyan, Najarian.
Yes.
Montero, Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. 5F, please.
5F is Director of Public Works regarding Implementation of the Senior Citizen Traffic Safety Education Program. 5F1 is resolution authorizing city manager or his designated to execute professional service agreement with Smarts Moves Inc., Smarts Moves Inc., for conducting the city's program campaign. 5F2 is resolution of appropriation.
Barry Allen, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and the public. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. The city got an $84,000 grant, that's good. But now, doesn't the city have staff that can do this particular project? After all, the staff in the city is very aware of the ethnic diversity that we have in the city and the park, and the problems that we have with seniors and traffic flow and traffic safety. Why not keep that 84,000 in and pay some of our staff to develop the program? It shouldn't be that difficult. It certainly should be within their purview. I don't see any real rocket scientists there, and if there is, can probably go up to JPO and get some help. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard.
Thank you.
Mr. Zern, can you do this in-house?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is not an area that we have expertise in. Smart Moves is a company we've used for our youth pedestrian safety program. We've been very, very happy with the results. As you can see in the report, this will be a multilingual program, so they will be able to reach out to various aspects of the community. And we're just very comfortable with what they can do. And this is not a program that we want to put together and design and go out and teach.
Let me ask you this. This was, actually, I was going to ask a question about this item, is that the GTV6 had done a very good job of some of the commercials that are running on Channel 6 about pedestrian safety, about watching and walking, and what they, there was, there was a Willie walking.
Walking Willie.
Walking Willie and all of those things. So, and they've done several of them, or they're in different language, that are playing in different things. So I figured if this, they were able to do this for pedestrians in general, wouldn't they be qualified enough to do something like this for the seniors also? Like just regular people who are older, that's all?
Mr. Yusefian, we, they certainly could, they're very talented folks. And this program is geared specifically for the seniors. But the programs you're talking about cost a fairly good size of chunk of money as well that we didn't have on a grant program, we had to pay out of our particular pocket. I think in talking to GTV6 folks, where and when we can use their assistance. But this is also, this is also education in certain component parts of the community, including senior centers and so forth, working with parks where you have live demonstrations, live discussions, as well as what goes on.
Okay, so it's not just.
Correct. And GTV6 will still work hand-in-hand with this company, to the extent that GTV6 will be part of the public education process.
Will GTV6 get any portion of this?
Well, to the extent they have to do production and curriculums, they would.
Correct. The company would have to pay them.
But keep in mind, as much as it's easy to say, "Can't the staff just do this?", the staff has a very full load. If we thought we could do this on our own and absorb it, we'd do it and apply for the grant. But at the end of the day, the staff would be taken away from something else that this company is very versed to do.
Thank you.
I didn't know if this was offered to GTV6, but apparently, based on the information, it was offered to them, but they just couldn't do it because they're over.
We've continued to work very closely. Components go beyond GTV6.
My question's answered, Mr. Mayor. I'll move 5F.
No, there's another speaker now.
Another one.
Mr. Milano, two minutes.
Good evening, my name is Herbert Milano, Mayor Weaver, members of the city council. I would like to suggest that if a contract is going to be prepared for this particular endeavor, that we set some type of framework for performance objectives, where we are today and how is it going to be measured. That it not be just another program that would have outputs and no outcomes. If you do not measure the outcomes with regard to how was the safety measured, how do we really reduce those particular pedestrian problems in a tangible, verifiable way, we'll be wasting our money. And I would also like to suggest, and I don't know if it is at all possible, and the city attorney maybe have some comments on it, but I would like to see perhaps in the future, as we come into new contracts, wonder if there's a possibility that we can ask for that anyone coming in with a new contract could not contribute to campaigns. Otherwise, we establish something, and there might be this continual undue influence that I see again and again. So to rephrase it, I would like to see tangible, measurable outcomes and a baseline from where we are today and where we want to be in the future. And if we don't have that baseline today, then what are we paying for? What are the outcomes that we expect? Thank you.
Yusefian, you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move the item at 5F. And also, I do not know who OTS is, and I haven't received any campaign contributions, so I just want to talk.
Thank you.
I hope you don't have to do that through every contract, Mr. Yusefian.
No, no, no.
Let's not set that precedent.
Okay, I'm just kidding.
All right, well, I think it's more than.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menuchyan, Najarian.
Yes.
Montero, Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. What is next?
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited, items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you for speaker, Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and the public. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. Few weeks ago, I think it was, I, I think somebody had brought up a question about how do you get in touch with various city services besides the police department on a weekend or a holiday? And I think it was Mr. Zern said that we have, or Mr. Starbird, that each department has a duty person who is on call during that particular time, and you contact them if, as necessary, through the police department. Well, Vanguard works 24/7, as you all know. And Saturday afternoon, I received a phone call from someone who was very concerned about 32-square-foot political signs. And I suggested, as I had heard at the council meeting, that he contact the police department to get in touch with neighborhood services. And of course, the police department said, "We don't know what you're talking about. We're involved in law enforcement." And the bottom line was, he was given a phone line, a phone number. And the bottom line was, he was given a phone number of neighborhood services that he could call on Monday morning. So I just kind of wondered about that. And ultimately, I guess it got resolved. And then, of course, we had the money that was spent on long-range planning. It was all going to be a part of the budget process. And I've been watching the budget sessions. And by the way, Mr. Yusefian, again, you are the most evolved. You had some great questions this morning, and I hope that information on cost does get back to the city council and to the public as quickly as possible, so those decisions can be made. But I was thinking about the long-range planning, and I've asked for information on that and said it's not available yet. And I figured, well, maybe, and I listened to Mr. Milano talk about output versus outcomes. And I said, well, gee, maybe the problem has been that the preconceived outcomes didn't come out that way, so we're not going to use it. So I don't know, maybe that's something we can ask about. But I did want to mention that to you once again, Mr. Yusefian, and I think that, I know Mr. Majarian's going to say that you ask good questions. I understand that something about the dummy and the ventriloquist, but I won't say which is which. Now, let's get into something very serious. And you know, we were talking, you talked about change in the Montrose area, or the lack of change in Montrose area. I think it's time that we seriously looked at change for the benefit of the public and reallocating the services and manpower needs of the fire department to more address our needs as a community. We have an aging community, and if you look at the number of calls for fire, there are about 1,100 a year with a huge number of false alarms, 1,100 a year, and about 11,000 calls a year for medical services, paramedics, and things like that. But yet, the majority of the budget for the fire department, besides being spent on overtime, is being spent on fire suppression. So maybe we should relook those priorities, and maybe we should start patterning the fire department after the very successful programs in the police department using reserves. And I think each time that the fire department has put up a "we need help," you have thousands of people coming forward saying, we want to get into the fire department. So you know, I think that this has to be looked at, and now is the time, as you're working each week with your budget negotiations on the new fire department payroll and their new contract. And I think this is the time to start looking at how we can better use those resources and maybe even free up some of the physical assets in the fire stations themselves. And that's what I'd like you to look at. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard for accountability. Thank you.
You have a question, Mr.?
Just Mr. Majarian.
I'd like Mr. Yusefian to disclose what level of membership he purchased in Vanguard. And if I buy the same level, will I get the same compliments that you get?
I haven't actually purchased anything. And one thing I do do, because Mr. Allen sends the blot to all of us, and I read him. As I said, I read all the emails. I just don't respond to them, but I do read them. Unless they put a phone number, then I call them if they need to respond it. One thing that I think Mr. Allen had said in his blot, which I think he did this as probably just, he did mention last time that, when he did mention the fact that we are, you know, I read my stuff and I have good questions. I think Mr. Najarian had made a comment that, yeah, we talk in advance, and I give him all the questions. And Mr. Allen had put in his blot that, gee, are they violating the Brown Act? Are they getting together? And just want to let the public to know that my questions are my own, and I don't think we get together and discuss who's going to ask what. And as a matter of fact, sometimes I'm chastised that I ask too many questions. But I ask them sometimes for my own purposes, and sometimes so the public will get some of the information through the answers that the staff will give, because I'm pervy to the information that the average person who's watching this on television doesn't have the staff report in front of them. So that's one of the reasons I ask the questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Am I the ventriloquist, or?
I'm not going there.
Or the mannequin?
I'm not going there.
Next speaker, Herbert Milano, followed by Lauren Collins. Laura Collins.
Good evening. My name is Herbert Milano, Mayor Weaver, members of the city council, city staff. When a councilman runs for office, his value proposition should be to serve the community. In my opinion, he should state what his objectives are and how he should evaluate his promise and his performance through clear outcomes that he would state during his four years in office. Unfortunately, we don't have that tradition, at least I don't perceive it that way. And in fact, what we have today is a lot of distrust. And we have a lot of distrust, and that is, I think, the reason why so many people showed up here today, because they just simply don't trust council anymore. When someone runs for city council, as Mr. Quintero has done, solely as a stepping stone to another office, he breaks his contract, just like Mr. Gomez did. He denies a good man an opportunity to serve and shows that his word cannot be trusted. When others on Mr. Quintero's staff make false statements such as, he initiated innovative programs for youth, just campaign literature, we seem to accept that. Why do we accept it? Those statements are untrue. Our youth will continue to be underrepresented and underserved. When Mr. Quintero said he promotes women's issues but fails to hold the police department accountable for the sexual harassment that cost the city over $3 million, we can be sure that our workplace conditions will continue to be abusive. When Mr. Quintero promised me that he would support a three-acre urban park and claimed that he confirmed during the campaign forum, like some of you did, a claim he later reneged that the very next opportunity he had. You see, we can trust council because the words that are given to us during the campaign are not followed through afterwards. We know that Mr. Quintero now will say anything just to get the vote. When Mr. Quintero accepts campaign contributions from the Glendale Police Officers Association and then fails to ask for any accountability and instead increases the numbers without any tangible justification, our budget deficits will continue to grow and worsen, and our city fees will continue to increase. When Mr. Quintero's campaign supporters claim that the Armenian National Committee is a terrorist organization and thereby claims that his opponent is one just by association, he creates the element of divisiveness that will tear the fabric of our community, and that is wrong. Mr. Quintero did not get my vote, and he shouldn't get, and I hope he didn't get, the vote of many other people in the community. We will know tomorrow, maybe tonight. My trouble and my pain comes from that disconnect, that we are seriously losing the trust in city council. And we're losing it because there is that significant link between campaign contributions and what happens afterwards. And I tell you, I hear it everywhere. People came here today because they simply don't trust that council will do as they say. And that is really unfortunate. We're losing that. And it is my hope that this council will see the light and somehow, someday, will promote some type of charter amendment where we really nail this problem and put campaign contribution limits, at least as a beginning to resolve this problem. Thank you.
Laura Collins, followed by Margaret Hammond. Mr. Howard.
Mr. Mayor, as Ms. Collins is on her way up, just to remind the council that I am under direction to bring you a report on revolving door, campaign contribution limits, campaign contribution limits from contractors within a certain period of time before elections, an entire, it will be a very comprehensive report within the next two months. So while Mr. Milano is certainly free to come up and indicate that he finds a strong connection and he has a desire to see that, it is coming.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, good evening, gentlemen. My name is Lori Collins. I reside at 914 Geneva Street. And I'm here tonight to speak to you again on the rezoning from residential to commercial of 702 East Glen Oaks. I have handed to you petitions signed by the residents of seven Glen Oaks Boulevard homes located between Howard Street and Geneva Street, and by two families living directly east of Geneva Street on Glen Oaks. These are the residents most directly affected by the rezoning. All oppose the rezoning. The rezoning will affect their quality of life and their home values. Ara Smeridrosian lives at 800 East Glen Oaks with his wife, Shaquay. I ran into Shaquay today at the Pulse. Last March, a car crashed into their front yard, and it was on the front of the news press because of the street conditions along Glen Oaks. And I believe that if this property is rezoned and its trucks start parking in front of it, the street conditions will get worse. Years ago, someone was killed at that intersection. The Hagopians live at 804 East Glen Oaks. Two little boys who ride their bikes along the sidewalk in front of 702 East Glen Oaks live at the Bogadessarian home at 718 East Glen Oaks. Mr. and Mrs. Marsh live at 711 East Glen Oaks. They are a retired couple. Ara Sheverdirian, who was here last week, even though he was going to be married on Sunday, quite a dedicated man, and I'm certain he'll be back before the council, he bought his home 20 years ago for himself and his parents, and his parents live there, and he wants his parents to live there throughout the rest of their lives in peace. Julius Luda and his family live at 710 East Glen Oaks. Mr. Bargosiegi and his family live at 714 East Glen Oaks. The Koshowskis live at 704 East Glen Oaks. Mr. Chokowski built his home in 1947. He's 90 years old. He should be allowed to live in peace for the rest of his life. We should be treating them with respect. My neighbors brought their properties to use them as homes. The city should meet with them, as I believe Ms. Wilkerson has met with the property owners up in Montrose, to answer any questions my neighbors may have about the rezoning. I have two requests. The next hearing date has been put over to July 11. I believe we have sufficient time now to hold a neighborhood public meeting. Please direct the planning department to hold a neighborhood public meeting at a date and time and location convenient for the residents to attend. I offer my home as the location. Also, I request that the applicant and all the proponents of the rezoning, including any interested members of the council, please attend this meeting if possible, so we could have a dialogue on this. Thank you very much for considering this request of mine.
Staff, let's take note of that. Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. My name is Margaret Hammond. I'm here on my favorite subject, banquet halls. I ought to have that put on my forehead, I think. The one I'm talking about, the first one I'm talking about is the Royal Palace, who, as I've said before, received $40,000 for facade improvements or whatever. They're also allowed valet parking on Bran Boulevard. They close the whole, take most of the block from that corner of Harvard down with valet parking. In other words, it means that a normal citizen cannot park there. We pay for it, but we're not allowed to park there. That property is given over to the Royal Palace. And then, I understand, they are also allowed to use the public library parking supposedly when the facility is closed. But then, who monitors that? No wonder, you know, you get very distrustful sometimes. Anyway, keep saying, why does this business keep getting special treatment? And then, how many of the banquet halls with the illegal outside barbecues and in violation of the ordinance that's on the books have been cited? And this practice stopped, and especially after 10 years of it going on and on. And then, what about the Montrose Collections banquet hall that was supposedly a restaurant that was given special parking allowances with the idea that they were a restaurant, not a banquet hall? And also that they were allowed to have their liquor license renewed without having anybody checking into the fact of whether they were a banquet hall or a restaurant? I really think it's time that these things were looked at. I mean, it's unbelievable that it keeps going on and on, and I'm going to keep talking about it. So you can make up your mind. When I'm being wheeled up here in a wheelchair from a convalescent home or retirement, I will be talking about it, because I just feel that these things must be looked into. And you make people become very distrustful. Now, they went away thinking, oh, this was a great deal from Montrose. But then you have a lady here that lives in an R1 home in an R1 area that is being considered changed to commercial. That could happen up in Montrose, that zoning could be changed any old time, that somebody buys one of those pieces of property up there in Montrose, and they want it changed to something else. Could that not happen again? I think it could. Thank you very much.
Mr. Yusefian.
Margaret, I just want to let you know about the particular restaurant in Montrose. We did get a letter from the attorney of the individual that owns the place, and I don't know if the planning director can correct me if that information was incorrect. The issue was that the facility has not opened, it's still going through renovation. What you did see was a private event that was done before the grand opening, and they told us as soon as the place is open for business, they would let us know, and they would let the staff know. And I think that was CC to also some of you guys.
Do I listen to that?
No, you may not. Mr. Starbert, could you please?
Well, I don't think that's fair.
Well, it happens to be fair by the rules we operate under in this city.
Because I had a personal telephone conversation with that facility, and I was told it was a banquet hall, and I couldn't make dinner.
You're out of order.
I'm out of order.
Mr. Mayor, very quickly.
This is becoming too commonplace with the audience, deciding when they're going to speak or not speak. How about decorum in this chambers? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, quick follow-up. In addition to the communication from their attorney, director of planning's put the owners on notice that if indeed there's an indication that the property is not being used pursuant to the land use entitlements, granted, they'll be subject to revocation.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Thank you. We can continue on. Tim Jago.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just announce that June 13 at 2:30, there will be a study session in the continuing banquet facilities.
That was announced earlier this evening.
Just thought I'd remind her.
Has the facility opened?
No, it has not received its certificate of occupation.
So there is no ZOC yet?
They have their ZOC, not their certificate of occupation.
Let's move on. Thank you. Jim?
My name is Tim Jago, Mayor Weaver, council members, staff, community. I had actually thought this was going to be like a real quick and easy meeting. Wait, was I wrong? And I thought I might be able to get up here before polling places closed, and I was going to open with urging people to go out. So now, that obviously is not going to take place. But people will see replays of this, and I do know from friends and neighbors that they do watch it. Now, if you're one of the people in our community that did not vote, then you gave me all your power. You gave it to me. I get to make decisions. I voted. You didn't. I don't know if you agree with me or disagree with me, but I think it's a true tragedy when we give rights and privileges that are so hard-won in this country and this city, and we just give them over to someone, not even knowing who it is. I'm going to be speaking again, as I have many, many times over a couple of years, about the Paradise Ford property. We paved over Paradise and put up a parking lot. Gosh, Joni Mitchell must have lived in Glendale.
That was a good song.
Must have. You know what the name of it is?
No, I don't.
Yellow Taxi is the name of that.
Really?
Yeah. The area that's in the dark highlight here on the map of Montrose is property that the city of Glendale owns. This isn't private, this is public. We already own this. We already control it. We already administrate it. Therefore, it's a lot easier to make decisions about this and to plan for Therefore, it's a lot easier to make decisions about this and to plan for the future. The original property that was torn down recently there at the Ford dealership was very much similar to the Bobs on Broadway, on Colorado, excuse me. Same 50s Modernire kind of thing. For some reason, that building had to come down. There were multiple service bays, and for some reason, those properties had to come down. Now, I don't know exactly, but I will hazard a guess that that property has belonged to the city of Glendale for over five years. It's functioning as a parking lot. It has been resurfaced, it has beautiful straight lines, it has black asphalt, it has 39 spots on the west side, it has 44 spots on the east side, four handicap spots. Last Tuesday, there were two cars parked there when I came down to the council meeting. Eighty-three spots, four handicap, two cars parked there. Now, the Harvest Market comes in and it's packed. It's jammed, it's there, it's full, it has motorhomes, it has trucks. Tonight, as I was coming down, well, you can play with numbers, I guess we had a 50% increase in usage because tonight there were three cars there. I'm not for, you know, it's just some kind of horrible plan to cheat us out of our community centers, to not do what's right by the city of Glendale. I personally believe it's a very wise thing to build a new fire department, a fire department there. I would love it if it was patterned along Fire Station 21. It would be a fabulous anchor for the west end of Montrose. I believe that a state-of-the-art library there is the way that we do bring up our young people, that we do bring in the people that are attending colleges and furthering their education. But boy, do I want some of that land. I don't know what's planned with the old library. I don't know what's planned with the old fire department. But I do know that within our communities, there are two needs that stand out. The people who are younger than the prime voting, wage-earning time, and the people that are older than the prime wage-earning voting time. And those are facilities that I want to see us use. If we talk about the quality of lifestyle in Montrose and we don't have a place for kids to go, then we're neglecting needs. If we don't have our seniors a place like Mayor Weaver, we're not meeting our needs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our communications is closed. What is next, please? 8A.
8A is Director of Administrative Services regarding general, new general fund revenue from fingerprinting and passport acceptance services. At 8A1 is motion authorizing startup costs and inclusion of new revenue-producing services in '06-'07 budget.
What do you say, Jim?
Move 8A1.
Are you seconding?
I will second that.
Okay, and we have one speaker, Barry Allen. Two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. I've looked over the pro forma, and it looks like it was pretty amateur, almost like any business plan that somebody in high school puts together with all sorts of fantastic projections. Now, using the same numbers that were contained in this report, looks to me like you can generate $60,000 a year from fingerprints. And of course, this shows, oh my God, a half a million dollars, and that's just in 10 months. Something's wrong. So I think that maybe this better go back to school and get some really good numbers on it. Now, I think if we're not using the city facility sufficiently, you know, there are other things that we could do. We could rent out our dump trucks from Public Works, you know, those that are sitting there. We can use the street sweepers to start sweeping private parking lots, and when we're not using the police cars, we can use them as taxi cabs. I think that there are, the post office is just, what, two blocks away? They do passports and passport photos, and of course, the online passport renewal service, fantastic. Just go online, renew it, boom, send your, give them your credit card. I think maybe the city is being too generous with the amount of money they think they're going to earn. I don't see a real analysis of anything other than your costs and labor costs and where that's going. Maybe this is something that should be outsourced, just the way you're going to do the $84,000 worth of safety training. I'm Barry Allen for Accountability for Vanguard, hoping that maybe you'll take, Mr. Yusefian will ask some questions, serious questions about this, and maybe have it put aside and take another serious look at it at a later date. Thank you.
Who's moving second? Is there a discussion?
Mayor, does somebody have the numbers from 2005, 2006 for this, for what we were doing, for the fingerprinting and all that?
For 2005, 2006, the estimated revenue is like $100,000.
Okay. And so.
If I can, which means now that we're eight months, nine months through the year, that's where we expect the year will be.
That's the estimated for the full year.
Okay. And so, if we're going to, so you anticipate in the end of the year, fiscal year, what will be the total amount we will get from that?
$100,000.
Okay, so we're going to get $100,000. So how do you get to $413,000 or $268,000?
The $268,000 is the, is the net revenue. What we've done is.
So we made $100,000 for last year.
Right.
For the end of this year. So you're anticipating we will make another $168,000 if we add more fingerprinting.
Let me answer it. But here's, here's the, the numbers we based it on. At our peak of running our current fingerprinting operation, we did 7,000 fingerprints in one year. We, that was overwhelming because of the people in the city hall lobby. I don't know if you remember that period of time, but it, we had to go to an appointment-only basis. That solved the problem of the crowding, but it reduced our volume of fingerprinting per year to where it is now, which is about 2,000 fingerprints per year. So we know from past experience that there's customers out there that we believe with making very little change, we could have a volume of 7,000 per year. We've actually put in the pro forma 10,000 per year because we have learned from that and with the additional staffing, we believe we can advertise, and we have some other sources where people need fingerprints, so we've used 10,000. So that's why we think we can get up to those volume levels. Really, and these are conservative numbers, our risk manager, Tom Alulian, Paul Keel behind me, when they put the numbers together, they, they felt 11,000 was the low end of what they would estimate. We reduced that even further by 10% to 10,000. So, we have a good location, close to the Glendale Unified School District. We have good, experienced people who know this operation. We feel, on the fingerprint operation, we feel very comfortable. We can not only return to the prior volume of fingerprinting, but do 50% or more because the customers are there.
The fingerprinting, does the US Post Office do the fingerprinting?
No.
So, in a way, we have a captive.
Right. We get, we have the Glendale Unified School District, we do all of their fingerprinting. The Department of Motor Vehicles does referrals to us. There are other places that have fingerprinting that is required in the schools, just as an example, the schools, their fingerprinting is required yearly for many of the classifications, the nuneids, et cetera, et cetera. With the auto dealers on Brand Boulevard, salesmen are required to have fingerprints, and that's a high turnover type of position. So there's a high volume there that really in the past was not focused on as far as.
How about taxi cab drivers?
That one I'm not familiar with.
Does the city clerk, do they require fingerprint?
Yes, some of the permits that we do provide actually through the city clerk's office do require fingerprinting.
So it's those kind of things where we, we, in the past, when we first set it up, we were doing it primarily for some of our own needs and for, in cooperation with the Glendale Unified School District. We've had some experience with it. We had to change the operation because of the volumes. Now we have a better location. We would like to expand even from what we were doing before. And then, in addition to that, the, the passport operation, the, the State Department has actually identified this area, as we have talked to them, as an area where they need an additional facility. The post office does not have hours that are conducive to all of the people who would like to apply for passports, so.
Actually, the State Department is moving in a direction of creating the bio-passports, and, and they are going to require fingerprints for that and also some DNA samples on top of that. So if that happens.
We'd be a natural for that also.
Right. And so, ultimately, in the end of the day, after all of this is done, in a worst-case scenario, we'll still make $100,000.
Absolutely.
And, and we're moving the operation from down in the personnel office, out of there, so allows people to work a little bit. Because I had to go there to get my ID and my picture and all the stuff. I'm assuming all of that stuff is shift over.
It's really just the fingerprinting. The city ID will still be done.
Still back there. Why don't we just move that over there, too?
Well, the, we're, we're trying to do these first, which are revenue-producing. We can take on other things as we learn.
And, and we're getting rent. We're paying rent to ourselves, essentially. So when you say we're making $268, it's not like we're going to run it out to a Subway sandwich shop. I mean, this is a space which would otherwise be very difficult to, to rent out and obtain.
And, and we've talked about one concept for the police building in general is that as we talk about reuse of that building, it should be first to look at paying customers who, who, instead of just putting city operations in that would have to be general fund-supported. So this is one that could pay rent.
Okay. That answers some questions. Thank you. We've had a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menuchyan, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero. Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
All right. What is next, please?
That's it. Is there any additional new business or written communication?
One thing I'd like to fit in somewhere here. I'm pleased to announce that the city and the Glendale Firefighters Association representatives have reached a tentative agreement regarding modification of the salaries and benefits of employees represented by the association, subject to approval by the association's membership. Once approved by the association's membership, the necessary resolutions and ordinances to implement the agreement with the association will be presented to the council for approval. So it's still, to emphasize again, it still must undergo voting of the membership. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yusefian.
I just want the public to also know that Mr. Allen, Mr. Mayor, actually literally asked from our city attorney before we ratified it if it was okay for you to come into the room and to check that. And I think Mr. City Attorney basically said, absolutely not. And I thought it was interesting, Mr. Mayor, as I looked at the old Montrose's picture, Mr. Starbuck brought that to my attention. There was a Montrose Hotel on Honolulu.
How many stories?
Interesting. Three stories. Very ornate.
And under, eh?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Stand adjourned. At 9.